Good afternoon. I sincerely hope everyone is feeling well, enjoying the beautiful and hot summer weather, and finding ways to stay healthy. Thank you for joining us today. Our vision is our destination, where we're going and when we plan to get there. Our mission is our purpose, our goal while we exist. It inspires us to action. Our core values are what we believe. Our values drive us and motivate us to continue the course of action. Our goal is to realize our vision and our mission and to fulfill our core values every day. Let's continue to find ways to promote energy, pride, and excitement in our school district even during the summer months. Next Tuesday is July 4th, Independence Day. Celebrate safely. Enjoy your family and friends. I welcome students and their parents, staff, community, and all board members. Special thanks to Mr. Lowe and Mr. Lockwood for assisting with the technology today. Today is Tuesday, June 27, 2023, and I officially call today's meeting of the Clinton City Schools Board of Education to order. Again, thanks to everyone who make our district the best that it can be. We recognize and appreciate your hard work and your dedication. Our deepest gratitude is extended to our frontline and essential workers, those who care for us and protect us. Your hard work, commitment, and dedication are recognized and very much appreciated. Our thoughts are also extended to our students, employees, and their families who are coping with sickness and the loss of loved ones. Special remembrance is requested for our city, county, state, and nation as we address all the challenges that we face today. Many thanks to everyone for working hard every day and for making every minute of every day count. Because of your hard work, the 2022-2023 school year has been a successful venture for everyone. Friday of this week officially marks the last day of this school year. Today is the final meeting of the Clinton City Schools Board of Education for the school year. Enjoy the summer days and get ready to start all over again in early August. No matter who or what we are today, we can all be better tomorrow. We are stronger together. I will begin with the roll call. Please answer as I call your name. Mr. Clark Hales?
Present.
Mr. Jeremy Edgerton?
Present.
Dr. Oscar Rodriguez?
Present.
Pastor Russ Emanuel may join us later remotely. Ms. Carol Worley has not yet joined us. Attorney Rebecca Williams?
Present.
Attorney Williams is joining us remotely. Superintendent and his staff, Dr. Wesley Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Emily Devane?
Present.
Mr. John Lo?
Present.
Ms. Sheila Peterson?
Present.
Ms. Nicole Hayes? Dr. Teresa Malinas and Dr. William Van are not with us today. They're at a conference. And we're also joined by Mr. David Lockwood. And in our audience, we have Ms. Kristy Moore. Thank you so much, Kristy, for joining us. Please stand and join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Next segment on our agenda is public comments, and we have no one has registered for this session, so we'll move to item five, approval of the board agenda. Board members, you've had an opportunity to review the agenda. If there are no revisions, I ask for a motion to accept the agenda as written.
Madam Chair, I propose we accept as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hales, second by Mr. Edgerton. All in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposites have the same right, motion carrot. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of consent agenda. Again, you've had an opportunity to review the consent agenda. It was rather lengthy this month, but I understand because we haven't been together since May 9th. So I'll ask for, and there are items A through Y on this consent agenda, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the consent agendas as presented.
Dr. O made the motion. Can I get a second? Second, Mr. Hales. All in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carrot. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is Dr. Johnson. Information items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me share my greetings to everyone. It's good to see you all tonight, this afternoon. Wonderful afternoon here in Clinton. I'll get to my items. John has those pulled up. We will start with Dr. J's good news items. John is pulling those up. I think the first that we're going to do is a review of our shout-outs. So John will go ahead and pull that up as well. I was looking at this this morning, just kind of getting my thoughts together, and this picture is kind of ominous. So our women's soccer team is holding the number three up in this picture. If you see every one of them, well, we, I guess, finished third. That picture was not meant to represent that, but our girls had a great season, actually finished the season 23-1 and 2, lost in the Eastern Finals to the eventual champion, Croatan. It is our third straight year advancing to the Eastern Regionals, and that's what that three was for. But when you lose to the state champions in the Eastern Finals, then you probably finish third. So great season for our girls. Y'all know that we feel very connected. Carol, Ms. Worley, has a member of our women's soccer team as well as I, and we all like to root our girls on. Had a great season, still think we were the better team. But we definitely are very appreciative of Manio that they went on and beat Wheatmore because we're not fans of Wheatmore. Yes. Moving on, CHS student athletes who participated in the NCHSSA 2A Track State Championship that was held May 20th at NC A&amp;T, Jakaryon Keenan in the 110 hurdles. We had a group that made it to the 4x100 relay, Josiah Robinson, Amaris Williams, Tremaine Ashford, and Josiah McLaren. Jakaryon Keenan was also in the 300 hurdles as well as the 110 hurdles. Billy Brooks competed in pole vault, Nydarian Blackwell in high jump, Amaris Williams in shot put, and Dexter Wilson in discus. Huge congratulations to one of those individuals, Mr. Amaris Williams, who achieved second place at the NCHSSA 2A Track Meet in man shot put with a distance of 51 feet, 11.25 inches. Congratulations to Amaris on your silver medal. And we know that's not even his best sport, but congratulations to Amaris on that feat. Second place in all of 2A. Congratulations to him. Also had another young man, Mr. Brock Sumner, who qualified and participated in the 2A Golf State Championship that was held at Longleaf Golf and Family Club on May 15th and 16th. Our bands, number one, they had a great spring concert, and after they, I think it was the next day, wasn't it, John? I think y'all left the concert, and the next day, they went to the Festival of Music, had to get up like bright and early that next morning and drive to Charlotte, but got super high marks there in Charlotte. At the Festival of Music, they also got to go to Carowinds and have some good fun that day. So y'all know, we just have a marvelous band and a band program, and kudos to Ms. Lowe and Mr. Tart for all the work that they've done this year with our band program. I think the number has actually grown, but when I put this in here, this was part of the shout-outs, and y'all know that Dr. Malinas does our shout-outs for us. But we had 25 students who had scored high enough on the access test to exit the EL program. I think that number's over 30 now. So of course, you know, we have a large percentage of our students who are now ML, and to have, and to see these students continued success and continue to grow and achieve and learn the English language. If you know anything about the access test, many people say that individuals like myself, who were born and raised in America, would struggle to pass the access test. And so it's reading, writing, speaking, very, very difficult, and you have to achieve a certain level on all of those tests to actually be eligible to be exited the program. To have 30-plus students in one year is quite the feat. So congratulations to all of our ML department, our ESL teachers. Fabulous job on that achievement. Shout out to our third grade. Of course, we can't release anything officially until September, but this was, again, shouting out internally, our math scores were excellent at Sunset, and we applaud the work and the effort of all of our teachers who teach subjects that are tested, and all of our teachers. But great job, and we shouted out to our third grade for their great math scores. And then, of course, as Dr. B kind of already noted in her comments before we got started, a huge thank you to all of our faculty and staff. We made it. We're through the 2022-23 school year. When I started in 1998, I didn't even know if we would see 2022-23. But to be in 2023 and to be talking about 2023-24 just seems unreal. So congratulations to all of our students, our faculty, our staff, our parents, our community for another great year. Always great to be a dark horse, and that was our shout-outs, that we are on a hiatus of our CNI weekly meeting and our agendas. So our shout-outs will continue in August for those meetings. I think we're now to our traditional good news, John. Some additional good news from the shout-outs. We had several students, I really don't know that, we probably, we can look at this real quick, John, but are all county recipients. We had several spring student athletes. You're going to have to go through each one, John. I think Clinton is going to always be at the top, so we can look at our baseball, our all-county athletes for baseball. And we have a board member, son, who was an all-county member. So we've already talked about soccer. So Oscar Rodriguez Marin and Dawson Smith were our two members of our baseball. For our golf, we had three all-county selections, Finn Howard, Brock Sumner. Hold on one second, John. If you'll go to the bottom just to make sure I don't miss like a Player of the Year, Coach of the Year, I thought they were both from Midway. If you'll go back up to the top. So Finn Howard, Brock Sumner, and Hayden Bonney were our all-county for golf. We were good with baseball. Track, our track all-county, Mr. Walker Spill, Jakaryon Keenan, and Josiah McLaren were our all-county for track. So we're good with that as well. Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Our all-county for softball is Ms. Avery Evans, Ms. Hannah Locklear, and Ms. Daria Chavis. Congratulations to them as well. When you get to soccer, you'll definitely have to go to the bottom, John. All-county for soccer is Ms. Ally Sutter. That should be Kenzie Yang, not Kenzie Young. Kenzie Yang and Ms. Evan Johnson. I know her pretty well. Our Player of the Year for the whole county was Ms. Ally Sutter, so congratulations to Ally. And Coach of the Year, who's actually coaching for the last time at the head coach level, is Mr. Jeff Smith. So congratulations to them. And I think we got one more. Women's track, John. All-county selections were Davanya Marable, Gianna Smith, and Ms. Tamia Evans were our all-county selections for all of our spring sports. So congratulations to all of our athletes and their coaches, and we wish them much success. Many of those young men and young women will be moving on, some of them to the collegiate ranks, some of them to college and career, and we just wish them the best. Others that are returning, we're thankful that they're returning and looking forward to another successful year next year. Not only do we have students that sign and go to college and for different sports and athletics, but this, I think, was the first time we had done this recently, and I couldn't find a photo of this. I thought about reaching out to John, but I just didn't. But anyway, we had a signing day for four students that are going to continue on in the collegiate performing arts. I thought this was awesome. So we did this at the high school in the lobby area. And so Kirsten Rose is a marching band member who is going to be continuing on at the collegiate level with band, marching band at UNC Pembroke. Emma Hobson was selected as a member of the dance team at Wake Forest University. Judith Cruz and Hannah Locklear were marching band members that will be moving, going on to Western Carolina to participate in a very well-known band there at Western Carolina. So very excited for those four young ladies as they move forward and continue their collegiate careers in the performing arts. That's absolutely correct, sir. Our scholarship totals, so our 2023 senior class, and that number was a plus because that was the original number that was given to me, but you know some scholarships always come kind of rolling in there at the last minute. John, if you pull that senior class picture up, it's a really good picture. I pulled this out of, I think it was the Sampson Independent. But a really good picture of our 2023 seniors. I didn't know about this until yesterday, or I would have put it in my good news, but we had five additional seniors that graduated today. We had a little ceremony for them at the auditorium. Their parents came out. We hooted and hollered and screamed and yelled. They finished up their work. They might have been like one credit short or something like that. And so we had another graduation ceremony for five additional seniors today. Really good. And we all dressed up in our caps and gowns again. So if you see my cap and gown in my truck, it's not been sitting there since the last time. I actually wore it again today. But congratulations to our 2023 seniors and their scholarship awards, and with whatever they're going to do in life, we salute them. We say thank you for being a dark horse, many of them for 13 years, and we know that they're going to have great success as they move on and move forward. Speaking of our seniors, I love the grad walk. I know that some of y'all do too. I was actually serving as principal that day at LCK, and we had our seniors come through with our grad walk. So we've got several pictures, John, of our seniors as they participated in grad walk. And again, great exercise, great activity for our seniors to get to go through the schools and the halls that they walked through as they were a little younger in life, as they were younger dark horses, and to go through with that cap and gown on. I mean, the students get so fired up. When I, like I said, I was at LCK, they were giving them high fives, hooping and hollering and yelling. They probably didn't know a single kid that was in line, but it was really good. Of course, a lot of the teachers knew the kids, and so it was fabulous to see that, and I really enjoy it. Congratulations to our two young ladies, Jill Casey and Haley Strickland, who were selected from our Dark Horse Fellows. You can open it, John. Yes, sir. And there's a picture of Jill and Haley there, and the article from the Sampson Independent. You can see those young ladies, and we wish them much success in college, and we look forward to seeing those young ladies back in four years where they'll come back and teach for us, and excited for Haley and Jill as they move forward, and really excited for our dark horse program. And a big thanks to Ms. Bevlin Lowe and Ms. Stephanie Carter for all their work and assistance, and a huge shout out to the Anonymous Trust for providing resources and to others that provided resources to get that started. So excited to see that continue. Join me in celebrating our, we don't, we don't, we don't have to watch that, John. That was actually the video. But we had our retirement banquet, retirement banquet, and our awards for our Teacher of the Year, Beginning Teacher of the Year at Alfredo's, maybe two weeks ago. Many of y'all were at that event. We thank you for your attendance. Fabulous event. We thank Alfredo's for hosting us. Great, great job, and great job to Ms. Peterson and Ms. Hayes and everybody who assisted. It's a big event, and they did a great job as always. Congratulations to our 2023-24 Principal of the Year, Mr. Greg Dirks, and we wish him much success as he moves on to compete at the regional level. It's always wonderful to get to do those portfolios. It's really wonderful when you get to turn them in. But we know Greg will represent us well. Also, our Teacher of Excellence, I'm not exactly sure that's what it's called, but Ms. Carissa Rayner. Did I put the same picture, John? I may have. I apologize. But congratulations to Ms. Rayner as our 2023-24 Teacher of the Year for EC. Congratulations to her. Huge shout out to our team at Sunset who was part of Project Uplift. Ms. Deidre Moore, Ms. Kristy Sloan, Ms. Adrienne Dorrett, Ms. Jennifer Perry, Ms. Brianna Smith, Ms. Dana Nimmer, Ms. Sarah Fason, and Ms. Allison Williams. They stepped in, stepped up, and did a fabulous job, awesome job of working with our students there. And I think many of our successes that we've seen in our test scores could potentially be contributed to not only our teachers at Sunset, but some of our teachers and assistants who assist us in the afternoon. So thank you for all the work there with Project Uplift. And Mr. Glenn Fason, if you're listening, I'm trying to get in touch with you. I know you've been trying to get in touch with me too. I know we keep missing each other, but we'll catch up soon. I also want to congratulate a couple of our teachers who were recently certified with District C, and they're going to be a part of our summer teamship program. That's Mr. Anthony Peterson, Ms. Danielle Lipinski, Ms. Jennifer Oliver, who was our new Teacher of the Year, and Ms. Felicia Everett, who are District C certified and moving on to help us out with summer teamship. Mr. Jase Westerby, I think y'all might know his mom. He completed his Eagle Scout project. I didn't know where this was. I had to go find it the other day because it just was, I hadn't seen that blue thing right there. But, and I know the high school pretty well, but it's out close to the greenhouses. And we've got a beautification project. You see that the work Jason and Jase did to get that looking pretty there, and it's, like I said, it's close to our greenhouses. It looks real good. Also would like to highlight our 23-24 dark horse individuals. We talked about our ones that are moving on in to go to college, but we have a large group that's returning, and John, there's a couple of pictures on the next page. They had the opportunity to go to NCAT and Western Carolina, and this is our group of young ladies. As you can tell, it's all young ladies. Men, if you're listening, I challenge you to become part of Dark Horse Fellows. You'll have the opportunity to receive a $40,000 grant loan scholarship that can be reimbursed if you return back to Clinton City. But they had a great time. You can see another picture, where they went to NCAT. So congratulations to our young ladies who went and participated. They had a fun experience. I know because my daughter was one of them. They went whitewater rafting. My daughter was the only one that actually ended up on the outside of the raft somehow. But they had, they had, they had, they had a good time. And we thank, again, Stephanie Carter and Ms. Lowe for their assistance with taking a group that far. When you go to Cullowhee, you can't get there quickly. Yeah, congratulations again. As I'm talking about our wonderful retiree banquet, but again, to our new Teacher of the Year, on the left there, the picture is Ms. Jennifer Oliver, is our 23-24 Jack and Kitty Marcy Teacher of the Year. And then our Beginning Teacher of the Year is Ms. Megan Snell. She's there in the middle, and you can see our beautiful venue that we had. Also, please help me in joining our Governor's School attendees, Ms. Emma Stone, J.C. Hillburn, and Mr. Jackson Lowe. They are pictured below checking in at Governor's School East at Meredith. And by the way, John's got the picture, you think they might actually be standing in the fountain, but they're not. But anyway, congratulations to them. I did talk to John. He actually got to go see Jackson, I believe, last weekend, maybe. Yep. And I think they're enjoying themselves, and Jackson's met some friends, and I'm sure they've all met some friends. I hear a lot about Governor's School and lifelong friendships that are formed. Is it four weeks now, John? Four weeks. And so they're, you know, residential on campus for four weeks and learning a lot, and we know they're going to come back energized, and we thank them for giving up four weeks of their summer to go and learn and be a part of Governor's School. Please also join me in saluting Dr. Nicole Carroll for her active participation in the NC Papa Assistant Principal Accelerator Program. She will continue on in the second phase of that program during the 23-24 school year, but she did successfully complete the first year, and we thank Dr. Carroll for that. And then we talk about this in my, in my other notes here in a few moments, but we instituted a attendance bonus program for our staff this year, and we had over 50% who met the marker, and so 240 staff members qualified and have received their attendance bonus during the spring semester. And so congratulations to our faculty and staff for working hard and getting that extra money. So we thank our board for seeing the foresight in that and putting that in, and we can continue to look at that for next year, but I would strongly encourage that to continue for next year. Moving on to my other items, again, I've kind of taken this from John, and the way that John does his, I kind of like that. But anything in yellow highlight is new. So you can see again, the 240 staff members who qualified for the $500 attendance. I think it was about 440 or 460 that they got in their take home, but they had to miss less than five days in the second semester. Cost to the district was 120K plus, and you're thinking 120K plus because you have to add in the fringe benefits on top of the $500 as well. So if you want like exact figures, Emily could have those for you next meeting and could tell you exactly how much the cost was to our district, but it was in excess of 120,000. And I know we've talked about doing that both semesters next time, so I just know that it would be somewhere around a quarter of a million dollars, you know, moving forward. County budget information, I don't know that we've gotten anything officially in writing, but you don't have to pull the article up, John, but the article's there for you. John actually sent the cabinet the 500 and some page Sampson budget. I could give that to you as well, but what I think you really want to know are the numbers that is going to be coming to Clinton City Schools, and so I have those for you. So the per pupil rate is going to be 1324. How does that compare to last year? Last year, it was 1273. So we get an additional, what is that, $51, John? Yes. $51. So that $51 equates to an extra $43,659 from our county. The capital projects, we asked for 415, and that was a stretch from what we normally get, and I think they gave us a good stretch goal because they didn't give us 415, but they gave us 412, 274.
The adopted resolution actually amended that to 403.
Oh.
And something. I can't remember the amount, but that, it's 403, which still, that's very generous. They have a lot of obligations and responsibilities.
Thank you, John, for that, for that, yes, for that budget update. But yes, we asked for 415. They gave us 412. Some of these other items have been up there for several times, so I'm not going to highlight any of those. I did want to talk real briefly about the Edenton-Chewon partnership that you guys know that we had with our Math 4 class. I suspect strongly that that's probably going to continue on the 23-24 school year. I've not had any talks with their superintendent in the last couple of weeks. I did, I think many of you know, I was at the superintendent conference in Asheville last week. I did bring this back up. Michael Sasser was not there. He's the superintendent at Edenton-Chewon. But I had multiple superintendents who came up to me wanting to know additional thoughts about this, wanting my ideas. Could they become partners? I talked to the Cherokee County Superintendent. So we really see this as a strong possibility because you guys know it's becoming increasingly difficult to find teachers in North Carolina. And so we may have to continue that partnership, and we'll just have to wait and see. I'll keep you guys posted and give you an update in our July meeting. Legislative updates, there's a few things on there that are new. John, you can pull up the key accountability timeline because our board probably wants some of John, you can pull up the Key Accountability Timeline because our board probably wants some of this information. This is just to let you know, of course, with accountability stuff that, you know, it's somewhat finalized. But we can't release any of that. So you can see that July sixth is the finalized data files are actually due to the Office of Accountability. We do have a few that we are kind of working on right now. Preliminary read-to-achieve files will be delivered to the public school units on July seventh. July twenty-fifth, the Office of Accountability gets everything that they need to SaaS, basically to start the whole EVOs growth calculations, and that takes a while. That's why you can't release any of this information until September. Cohort graduation rate. So I talked to you earlier about those five seniors that graduated today, five of six. You actually can include those in your two thousand twenty-three graduation rate. Anybody who graduates prior to August the fourth gets to be included in your cohort graduation rate. That was new a couple of years ago because it used to not be that way. So they will count in our cohort graduation rate. John, I think there's a few more dates on the second page. Final graduation verification is due on August the eleventh. Read-to-achieve stuff is August eighteenth. The Office of Accountability kind of finalizes all that stuff with like performance grades, school identification. That's finalized on August the twenty-ninth. That's released to the State Board on September the sixth. And it becomes, I hate to use the word official because it's technically not official to October fifth. But September sixth, when they approve everything at the board meeting, then they have to have like thirty days for anybody to submit what's called data corrections. So officially officially is October fifth, but after September sixth, there's it would take pretty much an act of Congress for there to be any change to your school performance grade and all of that. So just know that many of that, much of that stuff, we don't have. We know where we are on EOGs, EOCs, Read-to-Achieve, EL Progress, pretty much on graduation rate, but we know none of the growth stuff. And the growth calculates into your school performance grade is twenty percent. That's why I can't tell you where we are on grades and all that kind of stuff. But we do have a good knowledge of where we are and we'll keep you posted on that. And we can give you updates as you so desire. But just know that if we show you anything, we'll have to have you sign a confidentiality agreement and you will not be able to share any of that until after September the sixth. But that's just the rundown from the Accountability Division. Let's see what else we got, John. I know, we're not going to open this next section, but as you guys know, we are part, Teresa, Cheryl and myself are part of the of the three different groups that are working on school performance grade and accountability redesign. I actually put in the notes from all of those meetings. We meet every Tuesday at two o'clock. Not all three groups meet every Tuesday. But if you want to know kind of what we're discussing and what school performance might look like a year from now, if you go to that where it says school performance grade and accountability redesign and you see that hyperlink, you can see all the notes that we've had since we started these meetings in May. So I'll put that in there for you for your perusal. You definitely don't have to open the next one, John. But Superintendent Truitt also has a newsletter that she is distributing now to superintendents. DPI is kind of, let me see if I can come up with a term. They're kind of going sideways a little bit on how we done things previously in my five years of superintendent. And if you guys don't know, you got you got like one of like a veteran superintendent now. There's twenty-nine, there's twenty-nine new ones this year. There were twenty-eight new ones last year. There were twenty-three new ones the year before. Yeah, I'm old. So but anyway, but this newsletter is what they're going to start doing each month to get information out to principals. I like the idea of the newsletter, but what I what I meant when I said sideways. So not that they're not affiliating themselves with the NCSSA, but they are no longer having our state superintendent quarterly meetings are no longer in conjunction with our NCSSA meetings. They're actually going to be separate. So to ask superintendents who already keep a pretty busy schedule to to show up somewhere else to hear from NCDPI, we'll see how that goes. But I just wanted to share that with you. John, you don't necessarily have to pull up that article. But and I may ask Emily to even kind of work with me here on how I'm going to explain this, maybe even Rebecca. But there was an article that was written by WRL that we've put in here talking about these twenty school systems, it's actually more than twenty. It's quite a bit more than twenty. That could potentially, as this article writes, reads, lose millions of dollars because of some language that was released inside of this additional state supplement. So you know, last year and this year, and it does look like this may continue on in the new budget cycle, which we don't have a new budget yet. You know that there were some additional monies that were allocated to school systems for additional teacher supplement. We did everything we were supposed to do, followed all the laws. We gave our teachers all their extra bonuses to the penny. You can't give it to anybody else, has to be given to teachers. Where this article was coming from, and it took me a while to comprehend it. And I've talked to multiple superintendents and they all had different understandings. Emily's talked to people at DPI, she's talked to other chief financial officers. We all were told different things. But in Asheville, here is what we were told. Straight from the horse's mouth. If you're, if the local amount of money that you were paying for supplements was anything less than one hundred percent of what it was the year before you got the extra money and you utilized any additional state money less than one hundred percent of the local money, you were dinged by this. You were dinged and it was said you were supplanting because if you spent a million dollars locally, which is about what we do. And then the year you got extra money from the state and you spent nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars locally, that's less than a hundred percent. They dinged you and put you on this list. So Emily's done some talking. I know Rebecca, I've reached out to her about this and she's she's done some talking as well. But we have looked to see what we did this year. And what we spent this year locally was what was more than we spent locally in twenty-one, twenty-two. What this whole article about is twenty-twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two. And so we went back to twenty-twenty-one and we did spend less locally in twenty-twenty-one. No, we spent less locally in twenty-one, twenty-two than we did locally in twenty-twenty-one. And so that's why we were deemed as or deemed as supplanting. But that's exactly what we were told in Asheville, anything less than a hundred percent. So when I talked to Emily about it, I said, well, let's say, because you know, we do this often. I said, let's say we had five less positions because we absorbed those positions. Because you know, when I first got here, we had thirty-nine local positions, now we have fifteen. So over my five years, we've absorbed twenty-four local positions. So anytime you absorb local positions, you spend less money. So I'm not saying that's what did it. But we know now what we need to do. The good news, and I think this is probably what Emily's waiting for me to say is, the good news is Emily's hearing this, I'm hearing this, and I hope Rebecca's hearing this. We're hearing that the new budget is because none of this, the verbiage that came out about the additional teacher supplements, it was very vague and that was not worded anywhere in it. How you needed to spend these money, except get the money to the teachers. And so there was a lot of misunderstanding, as you can see, twenty LEAs, I'm being told it's well over thirty. So again, the big difference is if you spent more locally, local funds the year before, well, the year after, then then that's why you got dinged, anything less than a hundred percent. Emily, anything you want to add? I know Rebecca's listening, anything y'all want to add to what I just shared?
No, what you shared was accurate, so that was it.
I I agree as well, Dr. Johnson, I think you explained it very well. Emily, if you want to, if we can make contact sometime this week, I have some things to share with you. I want to hear where you are with DPI, but I have some things to share with you that might help us get a little farther down the road with this. I have some contacts that that maybe we can start talking to.
So so this figure was strictly total dollar amounts and not per person dollar amounts?
No, I think that figure was saying what they could hold back from us if they held state funding from us. That's what this whole article is about. They're going to hold, and and they could, if if they, if they would have the authority.
But if we didn't cut anybody's supplement or do anything and you go from fifty people down to twenty people, you're still paying them the same, you're just paying less people. We didn't do anything wrong.
Yeah, and so that's what the article says, somewhere in there, it says, I don't even know where John's at. But somewhere it says in there that it's it's quite possible that this was misunderstanding. I'm not quoting it exactly right. But anyway, it talks about in there that that basically that, you know, they're not saying that anybody did anything wrong or didn't really know that they were doing anything wrong. But you can see the school system that would lose out on their supplemental educator pay for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year if nothing changes. Again, Emily's hearing, I'm hearing, everybody's talking about that the new budget is going to put provisions in place, that this is going to be addressed and it's not going to be an issue anymore. But they're just saying that's how much money we could potentially lose of the additional supplement. And of course, you know, if we did that, it would be our fault. And I feel as the superintendent that we would need to provide that to our teachers. But again, nobody intentionally did anything wrong because again, if you spent anything less than one hundred percent of what the local provisions were in the year before, you were dinged on this. Even if it was, I was told anything less than one hundred percent, that's one dollar. Yeah, that's how much we could lose. But again, I'm being told, Emily's being told that they're going to work it out, it's going to be in the budget and that 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 nobody's going to lose it, lose any money.
Do they intend for us to pay our supplement the way we normally do? And and this was supposed to be additional?
There there was no, we did. We paid our supplement, we we always pay our supplement. I mean, our teachers get the same supplement every year. But the difference in what happened is we spent less locally. And because we spent less than a hundred percent locally, we were dinged.
It's not making sense to me, but it's probably not making sense to many people.
So if you spent one million.
I understand what you're saying. I'm just not understanding why they decided to deem these districts for this.
They, because they see it as supplanting. So planting is when you use additional monies outside, yeah, you know, you know what it is. Yeah, use their money, save yours. So yeah, and you can, I mean, John, you, I mean, John can show you the districts that they're up there. I mean, one of my best buddies in the whole place is, y'all knows, Otis Smallwood. And you'll see, you'll see Bertie County on there. You'll see Wake County on, I mean, there's some, there's some big schools on there. But Alamance, Burlington, I mean, you can see some, y'all want to start seeing some big money, look at Cumberland, almost six million. I mean, so yeah, I mean, it was Onslow, Nash, Rockingham, Surrey. So go back to that top, John, there's something, there's something in there in the article that talks about. Okay, John, go to where it says is substantial, right there. The law for the new supplemental pay program, unlike other state programs, doesn't explain how officials would determine supplanting had occurred. That's the sentence you need to read right there. They give you the money, told you to get rid of it, pay the teachers. And then they don't tell you anything about how to, if, what supplanting is going to be. But then at the end of it, they say you're supplanting. Hypothetical assumption, yes. They're they're supposed to be fixing it in the budget. But as as Attorney Williams has stated, she's got some contacts that she's going to share with Emily. And she and I have talked about this a little bit by email. I was in a whole lot better place when I heard in Asheville on Friday that this was, this was being addressed and corrected in the new two thousand twenty-three through twenty-five budget.
So Wesley, how did it make it to WRAL? Who, who, was it Alexis Schaus's department or how did the the news media pick it up?
That I'm not sure. Guess I would say good news travels fast.
I'm just checking. If it, if it appears to be an error or misunderstanding or I guess terminology problem, then how did it become a news?
Well, you can see that first line that John's pulled up, North Carolina school leaders are asking state lawmakers for a reprieve. And you know, our state lawmakers have really strong feelings for public education right now. So they may have leaked the information.
Oh, they did, it came from Burger's office, I guarantee.
Well, I don't know that. I'm just saying the potential is it got leaked when they started discussing this with state lawmakers.
About the same time he had some personal issues hit the news. He was trying to, he was trying to shuck and jive.
All right, let's move on, John. Help me out, John, help me out. If we'll go on to our athletic update.
Oh, quick question.
Yes, sir.
Did I read that the county is increasing taxes?
No. They're increasing revenue, but no taxes. There's going to be some like extra fees they're going to start charging for, not everybody, not everybody. It's in that article, that it's that 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 John could pull it up, but it talks about in the article like the extra fees, again, that's not for everybody. I don't know where it exactly is, John. I think it says right there, the recommendation for an eighty-dollar solid waste availability fee is part of the county's focus on fees for service to increase the county's need for increased property taxes. So there's some things that they're going to do like this solid waste of fee that not, it's not going to be everybody. But it's going to be, but no, 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 no tax.
Sales tax. Yeah, it was adopted Monday, they're taking it up one cent. They're taking up sales tax from seven percent to eight percent.
Okay.
No, where the section counties are, two point two five out of the seven. It's split between, that's several percent, split between county and state. You pay several percent when you buy something, two point five percent to the county and the rest goes to the state.
And I don't mean to go off on a tangent, but I, but I I got the article pulled up. They're they're increasing, they voted unanimously to adopt the resolution requesting that North Carolina General Assembly enact local legislation allowing the county to impose and levy an additional local sales and use tax of one cent, which would take it from seven to eight percent. I didn't know if that was due to, might we, are they trying to help us more? Is that maybe where the additional?
Not from that article.
Came from.
That that was, and that was an older article, like John said, they've actually had a new meeting since then. And that's why our four twelve became four oh three or whatever John said. But that was an older article where, because again, we've not heard anything. But that was an older article and that was just talking about the solid waste, additional dollars and all that kind of stuff. I think we're athletic update, John. We have a couple of summer dead periods and some of y'all are thinking, well, what's that? We have a couple of summer dead periods and some of y'all are thinking, well, what's that? Well, we can't do anything. No, no practices, no skill development. You, you're off that week and some of our athletes need off. So our dead periods are July 3rd through 9th, July 17th through 23rd. We've talked about this a little bit and we probably need to talk about it some more, not necessarily today. But we've talked about the consideration of adopting a ring of honor. Both A.D. Spell and Assistant A.D. Brewer feels like that if we do a ring of honor that we may have a lot, a lot of people. And so they both actually feel that the ring of honor could potentially get too broad. So they may want you all to think about jersey retirement some more. Again, we don't have to have a a answer on that today. But we do probably need to bring that up and figure it out, what that's going to look like. I I'll tell you some of the discussion. I mean, if you have a ring of honor, let's just say a ring of honor for baseball, what does that look like? Do you have? How far back do you go? Do you have 50 people in your ring of honor? Or do you have zero to one people who ever had their jersey retired and as a dark horse baseball player? I mean, yeah, I mean, so the ring of honor just, they they just think, I mean, how many ring of honor football players are we going to have?
Set the parameters, establish what would qualify for that. You go from there, obviously those parameters can be reevaluated every certain amount of years because sports change, records change.
But let's say, yeah, but let's say you say it's a thousand yards rushing. Is a thousand yards rushing in 2023 the same as a thousand yards rushing in 1970? There's a lot of. When you've had a school that's existed so long and somebody gets left out, I I, you know, if you, if you're, if you're talking about a number as as big as, that's what I say broad. If you're talking about numbers, 50, 100 people, 125. And again, I've only been a part of Clinton for five years. But when I think of like women's soccer players and we start talking about ring of honors, I can name several hands and toes that I feel like need to be ring of honor members. But if you're asking me how many soccer players need to have their jersey retired? Maybe one. I mean, I mean, and and maybe zero. So I just don't know, like, I mean, I kind of see their point.
What we're saying, what we're saying is the ring of honor should be a lower caliber than the jersey.
No, I, no, no, those two don't even want to do a ring of honor because.
But that's what it's sounding to me like.
Yes, a jersey retirement would be much more.
I I just, what what I thought that at one point we were discussing this was the alternate in order not to do that we were going to call a ring of honor, but it was going to be a high equivalent because we didn't want to go into the whole jersey retirement thing. That we were going to have a high standard.
Sounds like it's going to be in lieu of the jersey retirement.
Yeah, so you were thinking ring of honor was just in lieu of jersey retirement.
Correct. That's what I thought that we had discussed one of the times that we discussed it. But I thought we already had like a, maybe around all sections of Canada, I thought we already had like a.
Sampson County Hall of Fame, yes, there is.
Call it in to say you add this person to your Hall of Fame list and have them vote on them and keep going, you know. Pete Rose still ain't gotten into Hall of Fame, but if you throw his name in, you throw his name in, he'll get called over eventually. And I don't think we need to start that. I'm sorry.
We're just concerned when you've had a a school system.
You're exactly right. Somebody's going to get left out. There's probably feelings hurt. There's nothing you can do about it. And I don't want to be involved hurting nobody's feelings. I'm sorry.
And it happens in professional sports or like 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 Jeremy's mentioning, there's people that feel that they need to be in and they have all the qualifications for X or Y reason are still not in.
See, we can, so we can continue talking about this because I mean, I, there's a lot to consider. When you've had a a long illustrious history in athletics like Clinton has, we don't want to leave anybody out. But we also, like, like I shared, times change and I'm not sure 1,000 yards rushing in 2023 is the same as 1,000 yards rushing.
That's not what we're questioning here. I'm just, I mean, because you're right, 1,000 whatever yards back in the day was a hard thing to do versus now, you know, I get it. I think it's just establishment of what those parameters are going to be. Obviously, you know, we can say Roberta Clemente had 3,000 hits. That was.
But do we, but do we have, and I'm going to say something that may get me in trouble, but do we have? Do we have the records from Sampson so I can tell Wilbur Best what he's done and put him in too?
Yeah, I mean.
Do we have those records so that we can look up and see what what Wilbur done running a football or stuff back in the day? Because when they combined, they're just as important as the ones that was, you know, Clinton High School. So, you know, you you got to find somebody who's got the records from Sampson so that I can put Wilbur in this list and get him up there too.
I completely agree with that. I'll give you two great examples to come, I'll give you two great examples.
You'd have, you need to incorporate them.
Yeah, I'll give you two. I'll give you two great examples to come to my mind. Women's basketball. When my mom played basketball in the women's game, don't know how many of y'all know this. The guards could not cross half court.
I played there.
So, so you only had three offensive players and they played against five defensive players. I don't know if y'all know that, but your guards could not cross half court. Guards could not score. So if you institute a rule that you've got to score 1,000 points, you could have had a young lady who was the best defensive player you've ever seen, may have played collegiately.
But would be excluded.
Would be excluded from that room.
So for clarification for me, I understand all this discussion and the examples you're giving about the ring of honor. So if we now look back at retiring somebody's jersey. So if we look at this past school year and we decided we wanted to retire Carol's jersey, I'll just say that. And then we look at Carol's jersey for scoring 20, how many ever goals from soccer? But then we look, are we even going to look back at whoever? Because it seems to me it's the same issue. Whether it's the ring of honor or whether it's the retiring of the jerseys. If you go out there on that football team and take the highest scorer this year and if he was the one that was selected to have his jersey retired, when we look back last year or 10 years ago, are we even going to do that? Are we even going to look back and look at all those guys that we had go from here and go pro? Are we going to reach back and retire their jerseys as well? The issue seemed to be the same for me, whether it's the ring of honor or the, um, the retiring of the jersey, we're still going to have to look back and see who. And I understand what you're saying. 100 yards this time is not the same as 100 yards it was 20 years ago. But what did they do 20 years ago that was amazing? That was spectacular? That was Jersey worthy, retiring worthy? So I think the issue is going to be the same. Because we're going to have to look back and see, we've had some, some, some great athletes come from here. So if we just start this now, it'll be the same process from what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's not, that's not at all what they're talking about. Yeah, they're not, they're not talking at all about anybody now because one of the criteria is what did they do after Clint? What did they do post Clint? Did they go on to play collegiately? Did they go on to play in the NFL? Did they, one of the things they wanted to put in place, and I said a dead no, was did they win a state championship while they were at Clint? Because now we would be excluding several sports because we've not won a a state championship in every sport.
And a lot of great athletes.
So take women's soccer, since we're talking women's soccer. We wouldn't, we wouldn't even consider anybody. Right, so, um, so, so, yeah, but no, it's really, the real, the mirror is really looking back. We're not talking about anybody that's current.
I I wouldn't say there's anybody on campus right now that's even remotely close to being deserving of a jersey retirement.
Okay, so instead of me saying current, let's go to the issue that brought this to the table. Let's go to that school year that brought this to the table and looking at that particular player. And so if we take that particular player's accomplishments and then looking back from that point, because that the name that was brought up about retiring the jersey, if we look at their accomplishments, there's somebody else that's already been to the NFL, that's gone on and done things that were greater. This person is still young. They hadn't even had the opportunity to do those things. So that's, that's what I'm saying. Okay, this year we didn't have a, a jersey retired, somebody to worthy of retiring their jersey. But the year that that brought this to our attention, that particular person.
We're, we're not sure that, we're not sure that we don't unofficially already have two women's basketball jerseys retired because we do have two women's basketball that sit inside of the trophy case. And those numbers are no longer worn at, in, at Clinton High School. So that's really where we've kind of gone left of center, to use one of Greg Dirks's words, in this whole arena because we have two former women's basketball players jerseys who are in our trophy case and we don't wear those uniforms anymore. Are they officially retired? Nobody knows. But if they're not wearing, if they're not wearing the number, then yeah, they all, I mean, yeah, and we need, I'll say my two cents.
Um, that saw that they're worth and the coach may have said, well, nobody should wear your uniform anymore. It may not have been official. There may not have been any criteria. I think what Dr. O was talking about, you gotta have some parameters, some criterias, what Clark was talking about, it has to be high above and beyond. And and there has to be some trailblazing.
You can put a poster at the soccer field and the football stadium for somebody that rushed for 1,000 yards because my God, we probably had Eon running back rush for 1,000 yards. But that, that would not be a criteria for retirement at all.
I I just think there needs to be some smaller group that gets together that maybe look at some models that someone else has done to try to come up with that high level criteria. And if it has to be, you can't be current, you have to have been gone from Clinton City Schools for five years, 10 years. You had to have made the pros or collegiate or whatever, but I, of course, I don't think we can do it around this table, but back to what Clark said, there needs to be some recognition, some additional recognition. I'm not sure if it's retiring a jersey or ring of honor or you know, culmination of both or neither, but I don't, I just don't think seven or eight, 10 people can do it. I mean, it has to be, there's some, some model already out there. I think we could at least look at.
Yeah, I, I, Board Member Hill says probably going to be the athletic department, but you're going to have to reach so. I think that's the concern, Ms. Carol, is that we don't want to miss anybody. It's, it's, it's not that we're not trying to do what we need to do. I think the concern is somebody gets left out.
Well, they're all getting left out if we don't do anything. So that, that's what I'm saying. If it's the athletic department that needs to start, we, we've all sat around here and said it, we said this before when we talked about it, a committee needs to be formed to start putting some things in place for it.
And that's why I'm bringing this back because when my, and and I've been discussing this since we talked. We talk about this every time I meet with them. They just, not they, A.D. Spell and A.D. Brewer, Assistant A.D. Brewer, thought when y'all said ring of honor, and I did too, that y'all wanted a ring of honor for baseball, ring of honor for tennis, ring of honor for golf. And they just saw this thing, just like I've got it up here.
Yeah, too broad.
They just saw this thing getting way too broad. And now we've got 250 former athletes as ring of honor for just football. We've got 81 in golf. And so, so, so that's what they're, no, I think they're good. I know they're good because they've already given me criteria, like I just shared with y'all. State championship. I mean, they've already started talking about this and they're talking to all their coaches, but I'm like with what Mr. Edgerton said a while ago, we got to make sure we can get all the, um, I've got it in there somewhere like the last 10 years, but we need to get it in there for the last 100 years so that we don't miss anybody.
If, if, if you do something and you don't include Sampson, I'm voting no on it. If you don't, Wilbur Best deserves just as much as my daddy or anybody else with what he did at Sampson. And if you don't go that far back, we just throw it in the trash can and we'll move on and do something else.
Yeah, I, I can tell you that's their, their concern is that you just, because I, I'm not, I'm not trying to put any words in anybody's mouth. When I initially started talking about this, I think we said we really didn't want to retire anybody's jersey. And that's where we kind of came up with this ring of honor thing. They're, but their concern, they took that for me as meaning ring of honor for women's soccer, ring of honor for volleyball.
We can clarify that with them now if they're missing, that's never what we said, it was a misunderstanding. We do not want a Ring of Honor for every sport, so.
We want that Ring of Honor to be the equivalent of a jersey retirement.
Equivalent of the Hall of Fame for Clinton City School. And you cover the whole history. You can't erase history, so you go till when they were laying brick and mortar to bring the building up.
And then, and this thing we talk about, you've expressed this several times, we don't want to, um, forget anybody. We don't want to miss anybody. If, whatever the first ceremony is or whatever it names added, and you know, if we've forgotten somebody, we gonna hear it, somebody from the community is gonna let us know that. Once they do and we are able to verify that it meets the criteria, we make it right. Because we weren't around, I certainly wasn't around back then when that happened, you know? But there, there are some people that are still here that know a lot of history about what happened long before our time. And they're gonna bring it forward if we don't.
I agree.
But you know what? It would also be smart to go ahead and.
I will agree somewhat, because I know the process, because I've been involved with it, with what, with what, uh, Board Member Edgerton is saying. What you guys are talking about is very, 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 very similar to the Sampson County Sports Hall of Fame. A name has to be brought by an individual from any of the schools to this whole committee. The whole committee receives the names, they vote on it, I think it's every three to four years, they don't do it every year. And then they, you have to get so many votes, so it'd be, like, all of us would be on the committee. There's like 18 of them, and you're talking about some really knowledgeable, I like to use the term old heads from the county who've been great coaches. There are many retired coaches on there, and they bring a name. If that name doesn't get the, like you said, the Pete Rose votes, they don't go. They can be brought back the next time, three years later. And so, now we can do something very similar to that, if y'all want to have your own separate Hall of Fame. Correct. We do. But we don't, but just remember, we're only one of, of five districts.
And I agree with that, I ju, I do think we need to do something to recognize our athletic history. In somewhere, whether it be in the gym or wherever we pick a central spot to be to showcase. Yeah, Terry Holland's already in the Sampson County Sports Hall of Fame. I don't know about Willie, but, um, Jim Darden's in the Sampson County Sports Hall of Fame. But, um, something for us to point to, you know, when visitors come in, you know, wow, they, we hear about this history all the time, but there it is, you know?
It, it could be as simple as a photograph in one of them glass cases at the high school and photograph and a tag underneath their name with what they did. Ain't just startling, you know, have a case of pictures, because I'm not looking at 40 people.
No, I, I, I think this would be something where like for 10 years, there may be three names total. Yeah, something very, very.
That's the caliber.
Yes.
That, that we need to set, you know, we don't think of that. You know, you're good, but we need great excellence.
So I, I, I think we've got a good, I think I got some information to share. Uh, I can give that example, because Brad and Chad are both very knowledgeable of the Sampson County Hall of Fame process. I was superintendent the last time we had one, and I, I went as a non-voting member, and Chad submitted a name, I saw, excuse me, Brad submitted a name, I saw the name he submitted. I would have voted for that person, but I don't think that person, pretty sure that person didn't get the required votes. Again, uh, and I know all those coaches in there, they're not gonna hold just because that individuals from Clinton, we're not gonna vote for them. I mean, these are all very well-to-do, great former coaches that are gonna vote for good athletes. Uh, but I can give them that idea for it to be similar to that, uh, and they will know exactly what I'm talking about. And we can come up with some very strict, tight parameters, and we can, uh, start that process, you know, every three to four years. Is everybody good with that? All right, good. I think I told you all this last time, but just in case I didn't, we talked, I, I know we talked about the Neil opportunities, that there were gonna be opportunities for high school athletes to have name, image, likeness, opportunities possibly to receive compensation. Currently due to Senate Bill 636, that is on hold. So right now, all athletes still have to maintain the amateur status. So like, uh, we've got two football players that recently just signed to go, what I would say, major, major, major D1. Uh, one's going to Florida and one's going to Maryland. They can't receive any compensation for their name, image, or likeness at this time and still continue to play high school athletics in North Carolina. Now, if something changes with that Senate Bill 636, it's possibility that they will, because originally, the High School Athletic Association voted to support name, image, likeness, but it was on hold due to that Senate Bill 636. Then the rest of the stuff is just important dates, you've got the new calendar up there. Uh, you've got, we're doing a whole bunch of stuff this summer. I, I, I know that a lot of people think that school gets out for the summer, it, it don't. Uh, Read to Achieve, Summer Teamship, we've got, um, uh, other stuffs all up there. Summer Bridge, Simply the Best of NCSMS Camp. I do want to make sure that you guys are aware, and John just had that up. Uh, but we, uh, the deadline to submit any items for the July board meeting is July 18th. Uh, John, if you'll go back the other way, yep, thank you. Uh, we do, or we are having our administrative retreat, that does have to be a little earlier this year, uh, just because we start earlier, so July 24th through 26th, we'll have principals there, assistant principals, CNI team, cabinet, parents, teachers, uh, as part of that. We're gonna move it this year to the community college. Uh, we've been doing it at, uh, this school in the, uh, uh, gym. We just want to have a little more, um, not as much room and spaced out. We want it to be a little, a more intimate setting, so we're moving it to Room 140 at the Community Co, Community College, that's up there. And you also see our next board meeting on July 25th. Any questions for me from the superintendent items? Thank you for your, uh, assistance with that. We, Chad, Brad, myself have talked about that a lot, and I know they've talked to other coaches, and, uh, I think that we can, we really have a better sense of what we need to do now. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, I think I have the next item too.
Yes, since Dr. Malinas is not with us, Dr. Johnson, will you do her section for her?
Sure. I would love to. Uh, so, uh, as you guys know, if you don't know, Teresa, uh, and a whole team and Dr. Van are down, uh, in Orlando at the Avid Conference, and they just sent me some pictures while ago, so I know they're working really diligently. Wow, this first bullet, I don't, I didn't know if we would ever get here a couple of years ago. Uh, Year Two of Professional Development for Letters is complete. We still have a, yeah, yay, we still have a couple of teachers. Uh, we've given them, uh, through the summer, a, a few of them, uh, to get it done. Uh, but, uh, uh, our, our teachers have worked, I, I don't even know the right word. I, I don't even want to say hard, because that, that, that's not gonna, that's not gonna be the adjective. They've worked tirelessly, uh, to get c, complete with the letters training. It is a tremendous amount of work, tremendous amount of training. And thank you, thank you, thank you, teachers, for all of your efforts to become letters certified. The bad news, I guess, is I've heard there, there's gonna be a letters component that's moving to middle school.
That might be good news.
Uh, so yeah, I agree, because it is good training. And we do have students who arrive to middle school that are still multiple grade levels behind, and our reading teachers have trouble catching these, uh, students up, because they don't really understand the art and the science of learning how to read. So that's what this is gonna be.
How to teach reading in the middle school.
Yeah, how to teach reading in the middle school, absolutely. So it is gonna be, uh, a, a good training, but it's gonna be a lot, uh, and we'll see that moving forward. Uh, speaking of moving forward, uh, you guys are probably aware, may not be, we've talked about this, but it's been such a long time, this ELS position, uh, is an NC DPI position that was approved, uh, to be, um, at all LEAs. They were supposed to get these early learning specialists, uh, but they don't work for the district, they work for DPI. And DPI had a very difficult time, uh, finding all these positions. They really had to work within the LEA to find somebody who was willing to do this. It was a minimal salary, that person is not eligible for any bonuses from the district, it's just DPI money. Uh, and so we've gone the entire year without having an ELS. Uh, but we are moving forward, we have submitted a name to DPI. Uh, and as far as I know, that name is gonna be approved. Uh, that person was a teacher for us last year, uh, but they will now begin working with DPI. But they worked with DPI, but they remain in our district. Uh, and so we're excited to finally have this person, because I kept asking questions, because y'all know how I am, what happens to all the money? Like, if, if I don't hire Carol as the ELS, where does Carol's money go? And they would always say, oh, we just recycle it. That's not good for me, because that's supposed to be helping my district, and you're not helping my district, we don't have one. And I would bring this up like every time it, at, during our cabinet, and I'd be like, oh, now, now they've gotten to, up to 36, but they're supposed to have 115. But they're, they've worked really hard, and the districts have worked really hard, and we're much closer to the number that we need to be. Uh, just, so Teresa wanted to share that. Uh, but there's gonna be specific duties that they have, that's kind of, um, the parameters that DPI has come out with in regards to PLCs and the science of reading work. But just know we're gonna have somebody next year doing that work for us, but technically, they work for DPI. Uh, M-Class, um, we've had some great results, and John's gonna pull those up for you, uh, for our M-Class results. I think we've got it in here, John, you're gonna have to be careful with the, um, well, you see, you know how to work this. But you, you've got a tab for 21, 22, then you got a tab for 21, 20, 22, 23. Uh, and then Teresa also put in growth like she did last year, but this year she also added in proficiency. So let me, let me see where John is at, okay, he's at LCK. So what you need to know about LCK, uh, with growth, and of course, let's see, the closer you are, I see, I'm trying to think of the way I can say this that you, that we'll all understand it. The closer you are to zero, the easier it's gonna be to grow you. If you don't have a whole lot of knowledge of reading.
You can get there?
You can get there pretty quick, if that makes sense.
Yes.
Uh, so when we look at our numbers at LCK, you can see right now, this is just growth. This first, uh, um, column that you, well, not column, but this first table you're looking at. So we have no students at kindergarten that are well below average in growth. We have eight that are below average, so of all of our kindergartners, 242. Now, you may ask, why is there 16 blank? They may have didn't take, because you can't, you've got, you gotta have at least a pre and a post test. They may have missed the pretest, they may have missed the post test, they've missed at least one of the tests, so that's why they're blank. Uh, but you can see out of our 242 students, that we have 136 that have well above average on their growth, which is 58%, 24% above average, and 9% average. So our, uh, our teachers at LCK have done a phenomenal job of setting the start for these students. John, if you'll move down to the bottom of that, you'll see our proficiency numbers. Now, your proficiency, your proficiency numbers, just remember, proficiency is always separate than growth. Growth and proficiency are looking at two totally different, uh, let's call them, um, just because I'm using my statistics, let's call them two different bell curves. So the second bell curve would be proficiency. And you can see that we don't have any students who are well above average in proficiency. Well, we had all those numbers who were well above average in growth. So what that probably tells you is that when we received our students, they were closer to zero than some, maybe some, some others. So, but we do have 130 students who are above average on proficiency, 95 who are average on proficiency, and we only have 7% total that are below average or well below average on proficiency. Any, anything I can share, because we're gonna look at two more charts from two different schools, uh, uh, on those numbers.
Okay, um, as far as growth is concerned, would we, would it be fair to say, um, so on average, we had 21, we, 21 students, that's 21 students?
Correct, yes ma'am.
21 students that had an average growth, so would average growth be one year's worth?
Average growth would be, look at you, absolutely, good job, Ms. Carroll, that's, that's a great way to say it.
Okay, and then all those others, we grew them more than a year, but we still didn't get them, uh, well above proficiency, because they were already so far behind.
So far to zero, we'll say.
So, okay.
Because you gotta remember, when kids, they, they, and this is getting into stuff that, again, I'm not an elementary person, but you have to remember, when you get kids to kindergarten, many of them have had different experiences. Some of them have had three years of preschool, some of them have had no years. Yeah, so when they get.
They just come some ready. Many of them, some of them came ready, but it looks like this, a higher percentage came to LC car and they weren't ready. Weren't, didn't have those skills that they learn in, in a structured environment, such as, uh, another center or head start or pre-K or whatever, to get them ready for kindergarten. Because these are, these numbers start at kindergarten, right, not pre-K numbers?
Correct.
Okay, so, you know, we want, we say we want kids to enter school ready.
Yes.
With those basics.
Yes.
Basics, so would this kind of tell us that we had many who didn't enter red, ready, but we grew them?
Correct.
We didn't get them, we, we got many of them to average and above average, so we, we, we had a substantial amount of growth with them. We just didn't get them well above average, but we got them where they need to be. We got most of them ready, a whole year's worth of growth, to get them where they, ready for the next year.
I think you're nailing it, Ms. Carroll, because I would tell you, if we had 17 kids in each grade level that were below average or well below average, we would be knocking the top out of our proficiency numbers. We'd be sitting right now, on all of our test scores, if you looked at these numbers, we'd be sitting all in the 90% on proficiency. And if, and if I walked in here and told you, we were third grade math, 93% proficient, or 93% proficient on reading, we'd be doing some really awesome stuff. But no, I agree with everything you're saying, Ms. Carroll, I, everything you're saying. You, you, you put it in a very good context, especially when you talked about the one year's worth of growth. Uh, but yes, so our kindergarten group have took, have taken our students, and they have just grown them substantially, absolutely. Ready to move on to Butler? And you're gonna sit, watch the proficiency numbers, that's what you want to watch, um, and growth. But again, you're getting further and further from that zero where we started. So, so now we might be at like 10, we're further away from zero than where we were.
They're getting harder at ease.
Correct. Yes.
But the starting point's different too.
Starting point's different, right, absolutely. Uh, so here we're looking at Butler Avenue. John's making it small so we can all see it, while making it on the same page. So here you can see, we still, now, remember, this, the first chart is looking at growth. We now still have no kids that are below average growth.
Very good.
But your number that is below average shot up from whatever the last number was, seven. Ten to now is twenty-nine, because you're further from zero. So it's getting harder to grow the kids. But you still have thirty-six, twenty-one and twenty-one, what's that? Fifty-seven and seventy-eight. You still have seventy-eight percent of your kids that have average, above average or well below average growth.
Not bad.
And I think, John, she's actually got this by individual grades, she does.
This is first grade.
So we're looking at the first grade only. So the first grade teachers at Butler Avenue achieved seventy-eight percent growth for, for our students in first grade. Now, when we go to proficiency, now you see that where we only had seven students below average in kindergarten. Now we're up to forty-seven students below average. So again, it's getting harder and harder to achieve proficiency because we're getting further and further away from that zero marker. Um, but you've still got seventy-nine and eighty-nine and John is showing us, what's that, John? Uh, seventy-eight percent that are average or above average.
It's not bad.
Proficiency, yeah.
Still good.
I would take seventy-eight percent on every EOG we've got.
All day, every year.
All day, every year. Put it out, uh, yes. Um, so that's first grade, let's look at second grade, John. So we got second grade.
We're about digging deep in the numbers, the twenty-nine that's the below average, half of them could be on the borderline.
Correct.
You know, you don't know how close with just these, with, with just the, the, this graph right here. You don't know how close that they were almost there.
That's right.
You know, so, so you got to take that into consideration, look at his numbers too. That, that below average, you know, twelve of them could have been. That's exactly right.
And, and, and we also talk, so the opposite is also true. So, so, so let's say, now you're exactly right, but I, I want to make sure I say this, because I didn't say this, I didn't explain this. The closer you are to zero, the easier it is for you to grow. The closer you are to a hundred.
The harder it is for you to grow.
The harder it is for you to grow. And what you see in school is your AIG kids.
Are hard to grow.
Closer to that hundred.
Hard to grow.
Really hard to grow. So, uh, so, so of those, so of those twenty-nine kids, now I don't know this. I would bet some of those students, they get to the third grade are gonna qualify for AIG. I would say several of them probably, because they're so far already close to that hundred. It's almost impossible for them to grow. Does that make sense?
Uh huh.
Um, okay, so these are our second grade numbers. So still, great job with our growth. We're there at fifty, sixty-seven plus seventeen, that's like eighty-four. Uh, eighty, eighty-four percent, um, no, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Eighty, eighty-six, eighty, eighty-four percent, uh, for our growth. John, if you go down to proficiency. So here we are at seventy-two percent proficient, if I'm looking at that right. Seventy-two percent above average. Uh, still again, proficiency numbers for second grade, um, pretty good. Um, so, you know, seventy-two percent. Now remember, this, this is not, it's not a direct equivalent to, um, EOGs and EOCs. But I think, uh, Dr. Malinas has shown y'all, what's that thing called, John?
Correlation.
A correlation study, uh, for M-Class and she's shown y'all that it's really tight with M-Class. M-Class does a really good job of, uh, preparing our students for that, that EOG and EOC. Uh, I remember when Ms. Peterson was in a different district, she came to me when I was in a different role. We gotta have M-Class, we gotta have M-Class. I said, Sheila, we can't afford it. But, uh, but we have M-Class here in Clinton City schools and our teachers luck, I think they just do. It's really good. All right, John, I think we got one more school, John? Think, maybe?
Sunset.
Uh, Sunset for M-Class. And remember, M-Class is only K-three. So we don't have four and five, it's just a K-three program. So you can still see here for growth, the number again is starting to climb a little bit. But we're still doing a great job of growing our students. Uh, what's that? Twenty-two and eighteen is forty. You're still growing fifty-five percent of your students. Uh, and, and believe me, growth is not easy to get as we get further and further from that zero. So fifty-five is still good, uh, uh, for growth. If you move into proficiency, this is where you start seeing some numbers get closer to what we're seeing with our EOGs and our EOCs. So now you're only at forty-eight percent that is proficient. And I can tell you our ELA numbers would be all over that. I'm not gonna give y'all any numbers, but they would be very, very comparable to that right there. Um, whereas in math, we're doing a really good job with math. Uh, but also I think you have to remember how our demographics are drastically changing in our district. And so when we're getting our students, many of our students are coming, uh, I think that the number that we heard yesterday, John, John sat with me in principal interviews. And I think one of the, uh, individuals that interviewed for the position brought up that a hundred and seventeen of our students at Butler Avenue. Uh, next year are gonna be ML students. So when you've got a hundred and seventeen of your four-hundred-and-eighty that are multilingual learners. And classified as multilingual learners, which is twenty-five percent or more.
It's a lot.
You can see that it's becoming more difficult to get proficiency for students who are learning English as a second language.
So with that, with that in mind, and we've talked about how the, the demographics of the districts changing and, and it is gonna continue to change. So we have to change. We have to start doing education different than the way we've been doing it. Uh, when I look at this, this, um, these numbers here, my thought goes to, this is third grade. We start seeing that the numbers shift as we went through the grades. So it seems to me that we need to start doing education different prior to third grade, because then they just get worse after this. It started, the, the numbers started to, the proficiency numbers, growth numbers were still doing pretty good. But the proficiency numbers were, um, starting to, I guess, decrease or kind of level out. So what is, and we start thinking along the lines of what are some things that we can start doing different at the elementary level? At the, um, and it's not necessarily doing, adding something, but what can we begin to do differently? Um, acknowledging the changes that we see with the demographics, that we start trying to look at education from a different lens to see. What, what do we need to do different to, to meet the needs of the, the ML, multi-language learners that are coming in? Um, to, to try to catch this.
And I.
Before it gets continued to.
I don't know if there's anything we can do, because when, when I was growing up, when you were growing up. When we went home, our mom and daddies spoke English. We all spoke the same language. The, a lot of times, and I see it at work a lot, a lot of times, the children are learning English, but when they go home.
They don't hear it.
The parents are still speaking Spanish and so the learning stops. It doesn't continue learning at home, except for what the child has learned at school. And I don't know if anything the schools can do to help that, because when we go home and we're talking at home, we're doing the same language. When, when they go home, they come to schools, they're learning English. When they go home, you know, they, they're speaking Spanish or they're teaching their parents what they learned at school that day. It's, it's not a continuing education at home like it is, you know, with math or with science or something like that. Language is a, it's a hard barrier to cross.
Uh, yeah, I'd agree.
Is that right?
I would agree with, with, with you, Board Member Edgerton, for sure. Uh, wha- what I would say is that I think the state's trying to adopt some processes like the science of reading. And trying to push the science of reading, uh, to K-three educators. Do I think the science of reading is the be-all and end-all? No, but do I think the science of reading adopted with, I like a, I like a balanced approach. You hear this term balanced literacy and you actually teach phonemes and phonics and you teach how to read. Uh, and then you also teach, uh, sight words and all of those types of things. I think a balanced literacy approach is, uh, is a good way. Uh, we, we, we're doing, we, school has not done anything like it used to be when, uh, when, when my oldest kids were, you know, were in school. We do a lot of small group instruction now. We pull them out for, um, what's called burst kits now. And they get additional assistance with, uh, with learning, uh, that's kind of at the foundational levels. So we are doing school differently. I can tell you based on our demographics with other districts that have similar demographics as us. We would be in the high achieving category. Um, that's why you can't, uh, look at Clinton City and compare Clinton City to, I'm just thinking of this county, because I've done a lot of background on this county today. You can't do, compare Clinton City to Camden County. They're not the same. No, they're, they're nowhere close to being the same. And, and, and so you have to look at LEAs with similar demographics and demographic patterns. And then you even have to think about, like, um, Mr. Edgerton's talking specifically about Spanish. Well, we've started to get a pretty large contingency of Haitian Creole students. Um, so the la- the languages start changing and so the small group instruction, the, um. It's not technically remediation, but like the burst kits that we're doing. Uh, we've got, uh, several interventionists throughout our elementary schools levels, uh, that are working one-on-one with these kids to teach them how to read. But you're right, no, I agree with you that you have to address this at the elementary level. Um, and then that's why they're talking about adding a letters type of, um, uh, PD at the middle school level. Because it has to keep recycling, because we know that English, where Mr. Edgerton was going is that English is cyclical. You know, you, you, you don't, when you move from, uh, kindergarten to fifth grade, the standards just are, are cyclical. They keep coming back and, and, and going over around in the circle, whereas math, you're learning different skills. And math's more like a ladder or a rungs on a ladder, where ELA is cyclical. So we are doing school totally different. Um, and you know, are there some other things we could do different? Sure, I mean, we could consider, um, we'd have to find the right staff, but we could do, um, um, we could teach, you know, Spanish immersion. Uh, you know, but, but you're gonna have to find enough dual certified teachers, because it's not, just because you can teach Spanish. And, and, and we've had this discussion at the cabinet level too. I, I seen Ms. Peterson shaking her head, uh, like agreeing with me. You, you can't just speak Spanish. You've got to be Spanish and elementary ed certified. And, and so that's hard to find those types of people, because y'all know we're struggling just to find teachers. Um, but, but there are some things we can do differently. Um, but I can tell you that we are doing schooling differently. Um, you know, we're adopting a new math curriculum for next year. Uh, we have adopted a new ELA curriculum three years ago. We're adding some additional resources to that curriculum, because none of us, especially me and Teresa and those of us that have done, uh, CNI for a long time. We don't feel like that the curriculum that was adopted, this was before we got, uh, the science of reading. We don't feel like it closely matches science of reading. So there's some supplements, things like what's called Hagerty, that you can supplement what we're doing with H, HMH, that's more aligned to the science of reading. Um, but we are, school's totally different. Um, but to get to Mr. Edgerton's point, we need a lot of help from home. Um, and we need a lot of after-school programs, which is what we're doing with, uh, Glenn, Glenn's program. And we're going to try to start those programs with the YMCA. Because as much as we can keep the kids here in our environment and keep them, uh, learning and progressing, I think the better off we're gonna be. Uh, but I can tell you, because I know, I've seen the scores, when you see Sunset's numbers, you're gonna be impressed. Um, overall as a school, um, they've done a great job. Um, and our teachers have done a great job there. And you've also got to remember that we have a abundance of beginning teachers at Sunset. And they're gonna be able to put their numbers up with about any number that they've thrown up in the last five to ten years. And you're gonna be impressed by their numbers. Um, they've had a remarkable year. Um, so with all, all that to say that we are doing schooling different, but could we do more? Absolutely, absolutely.
Opinion to all that's being discussed is, yes, I appreciate the fact that we're doing school different. Uh, I completely agree with the fact that unfortunately our multilingual populations, when they arrive to Sampson County, it might be. Year three, four, or five, or year six, seven, eight, because it is a culture thing that we, we move, we come. And again, Sampson County, as we all know, being the largest agricultural, we do get an influx of population. We, we are aware of that and I'm pretty sure the county sees that. To your point, I think at this point, as a school district, uh, to me, the value is to see the growth. Uh, unfortunately, as you, we, we can't control what the population gets, learn in another school district or come here with certain deficiencies. We have to show growth. So I appreciate your numbers in regards to growth. However, at the same time, I think we need to take a proactive approach and continue to communicate in English and Spanish when we send messages. I think that that is very helpful, because we've had situations as even this year's high school graduation. That there were students not in attendance and if you looked at the tendency, it was our Hispanic students that were not there. Which I, I, I think is just showing the value of what we have, just like other states do. But at this point, again, if we can continue to hire a more diversified population, yes. If you don't have the credits, if you don't have the degree, if you don't, uh, that is completely correct. So I think if we're seeing a change in the growth of our student population in those areas. Maybe we need to change the way we do business to try to get more folks to come here. That maybe are bilingual. I mean, I know we used to have, wasn't it the, um, Visiting International Faculty at one point? The VIF program? Maybe that's something we need to continue to explore. If, if the numbers present that, again, everything goes with data depending on how we go. You know, and I'm not saying do for once what we wouldn't do for others. That's not what I'm saying. Because again, uh, Mr. Edgerton does bring a point and it's true. When you go home, you, you speak the language and mom and dad sometimes are not able to assist that student. So you have brothers and sisters helping students. And I appreciate the fact also that you're saying that we're having more, uh, after-school and different services. But to your point too, how are we achieving success as we continue to grow through the years? Is it, are we looking at growth and continuous growth or are we looking at them understanding? Where are we going with this? So, um, that's just my viewpoint as far as from hearing the conversations from our, my colleagues here. On seeing what we can do to continue to, again, if you got one-third of the population of a school, what do we do?
Yes, sir, I agree, all of those are good comments. We, um, so again, one of my best friends in this business, I, I won't call his name again, I've already mentioned it. He utilizes an abundance of VIF teachers. Um, very few of them are Spanish-speaking. The majority of them come from Jamaica or the Philippines. Um, and they come with very, they speak, most of them speak English, but it's, um, you know, it's. That, you know, sometimes it can be very difficult to understand, um, uh, because, you know, they've not been in America. Uh, and they definitely not been part of the, the Clinton culture. Uh, but, uh, and it's more of a cultural thing, uh, than anything. Uh, but though, we, I, we, we've, we've talked about this, we have good. Uh, but though we I we've we've talked about this, we have good ideas, but like you said, um. Um, Dr. Dr. O, Dr. Rodriguez, um, we are doing a good job with growth. Um, and we're growing our kids and we're getting them uh to where they need to be. Um, and growth is what I always look at because I think like going back to what Ms. Carroll said. Uh, way a few minutes ago, if you can have a year's worth of growth. And that teacher has done their job with that child. Um, and we're seeing that. Um, for the most part, uh, we've just got to continue to keep finding high quality teachers. We know that the number one factor. Into whether a child receives an appropriate education is the teacher in the classroom. And we've got to have people like myself, people like Ms. Peterson, all of us out there um recruiting. For Clinton City Schools and recruiting uh Ms. Peterson, she tells us to us all the time. She'll go to the dentist and she's recruiting at the dentist. She goes to the grocery store. She's recruiting at the grocery store. Ms. Carroll's recruiting at the bank. Uh, hopefully Dr. O is recruiting from Fayetteville Tech. Uh, hopefully Jeremy's recruiting when he's selling. But 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 we, and I know we do this and we talk about it a lot, but we have to continue. Dr. B and I, we talk about this all the time and and we've got to continue to sell the successes of Clinton City Schools. We've got a great school system, very family atmosphere at school system. I know most teachers by name. They know me, uh, they know my staff. And we've got to continue to advocate for Clinton City Schools. Because we've got to have the best possible teacher in every single classroom that we can possibly find. She teaches in Wake County. She goes and teaches 18 months in Wake County to get the signing bonus. Then she leaves Wake County and goes to Vance County for 18 months to get their sign bonus. Then she leaves Vance County and goes to Chapel Hill for 18 months to get their sign bonus. Then she leaves Vance County to go to Durham and teaches in Durham for 18 months to get their sign bonus. So what we're trying to do is a whole different creative environment is we're trying to make our teachers. Uh, buy into Clinton City being a family. That we're going, you're gonna notice superintendent by name. He's gonna come see you every day. You're gonna be able to approach him about anything you have. And we want it to be a family type atmosphere. Um. I I can tell you that we are doing a great job of establishing that. Um, I've never been a big fan of the signing bonus because I think what happens is is you get them here. You're really not being fair to your teachers that have been here and have come. Because let's say we decide to start doing a signing bonus for math. For for this coming year. What about our math teachers that came last year? Did they just miss out because they came one year late? Or or they got here one year early? Um, and so. If you're gonna do anything, I like to take care of all of your teachers. Give you a great example, and this is gonna kind of go back to the budget. So one of our, one of our budgets was our house budget. They put in, what was it, John, four and a half percent? I think that's what it was. Four and a half percent and everybody was gonna get four and a half percent. Every state employee, every teacher was gonna get four and a half percent. They were gonna take care of everybody. The Senate, who we've been kind of talking about this this year, they were gonna put in these huge, huge bonuses. For beginning teachers. Some beginning teachers were gonna get 10, 15% raises. You know what Bev and Low was gonna get? Twenty dollars a month. You know what Kimberly Johnson was gonna get? Twenty dollars a month. You know what Rebecca, you know what Rebecca Hells was gonna get? Twenty dollars a month. So I say that to say signing bonuses are only good for what they are. They go out, you get somebody, you recruit them, and they leave. So you 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 try to, if we're gonna do anything. Let's look at our supplement. Let's look at our $500 attendance bonus that we just adopted. That's gonna go to $1,000 next year. So you can earn, not only you're gonna get the our our pretty nice supplement. But now you're gonna be able to earn an extra $1,000 if you show up and come to come to work.
I think we have to remember too that the teacher pipeline is dwindling. It's like we we don't, we want to recruit and even with a signing bonus, you might get two or three. Or four or five, but and like Dr. Johnson was talking about they're migrating, they're just coming and get that bonus and move on to the next place to get that bonus. But we don't have that many people to choose from whether you have a signing bonus or not. That that's our problem. And and programs like that Dark Horse Fellows, when you're growing your own, you. And and I've said this many times, I've talked to Ms. Low about it recently. We gotta start earlier than 11th grade to get them interested in this noble profession. We start by 11th grade, they've almost decided, most of them, what they want to do when they grow up. So I'm I'm an advocate of starting as early as fifth grade, sixth grade to get them interested in what we do. Every day and the and the value of of public education. You can tell we're we're fighting, um. We're fighting our leaders in Raleigh and and everybody else for those dollars. And and we're also fighting for students, Clinton City School students or wherever. To want to go into education as their career, not just a job, not to go from. Signing bonuses, signing signs, signing bonus, but we need to get them interested early and let them see the value. And I think Dark Horse Fellows is a is a great way to start. I just think we need to do that a lot earlier. So there are a lot of parameters and variables out there that if we had. Like a recruitment and retention plan so that we can sell ourselves. All the good news that we see every month, I'm not sure how many people see that. There, how many people are aware of what we do have going on in this district? I think we have to tell our story better, more often and more wide wider and a wider array than what we're doing. To to help recruit not only our own, but those other people outside of our district. We gotta, I guess, cast a wider net. Um, and I know the friend you're talking about that um does a lot with. I'm not even sure it's called Business International Faculty, but that type. That I think he has 13 teachers in his district from other countries, but they're here for three years. And it takes them a while to acclimate it from Columbia to whatever that county is. And I know where it is, you know, east of North Carolina. So by the time they get acclimated, learn the culture and the norms and the values of that district, then they have to leave. So he has to start over again. I understand the 13 he has this year, I think maybe eight are leaving. So that's eight vagaries and if he replaces them with VIF, he has to start over again. So anyway, I think there are a lot of variables that we need to look at, take a a close look at more so than. The money is good. Um, I would probably move for a signing bonus every three or four years if it was good enough. But we need to look at something that's sustainable, I think.
The only thing I was gonna add, so. Um. In the business I'm in, it all boils down to a dollar. A a relationship, but a dollar. Um, and when we interview folks, I mean, I I was with one of our execs two or three weeks ago. He works in Manhattan, New York, Park Avenue. He was doing interviews for an entry level position with us in Manhattan. The young man he was interviewing was graduating from Harvard. Pretty, pretty legit applicant, I would say. Uh, and it's a good, I mean, it's a good paying job fresh out of college, a lot more than a teacher makes. Um, but he said, I stopped the interview. Because uh, the young man told me that he would be available to work two and a half days a week. And then he told me all the things that he is involved with that has absolutely nothing to do with earning his paycheck. And so this, he is our chief risk officer. Stopped the interview and said. You're wasting my time and I'm wasting your time. This isn't the fit for you. So I guess what I'm saying is. We are limited by our state government. In the dollars and cents category to a certain degree. We, I think, do a good job to Ms. Carroll's point of offering these different things that aren't necessarily just tied to a signing bonus. The attendance bonus, the fact that our supplement continues to be one of the highest East of 95. Um, the Dark Horse Fellows. I think another thing that is a recruiting tool for Ms. Peterson. Is what you've done and your staff's done with the Edmonton Chawan virtual. You know, I know it's hard to, as as a school district, to offer ways for people to work that aren't in a classroom. We we don't, our industry, this, the education is still dominated by in-person curriculum, right? But I think you're you you you're competing against every other industry that's offering. Work from home options. Every other industry. Um, I mean, there there's not anybody we hire now that doesn't have the option to work from home two days a week. So any kind of you. Tool in the tool belt you've got to do, and to my knowledge, we're the only district in the state doing that, right? So that's a huge recruiting tool for 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 Ms. Peterson and her folks, I think. So to Dr. Brunson's point, telling those stories, like your good news stuff. I would love to see that blasted on social media every single month. The Clint, whoever controls the Clinton City Schools Facebook page, blast it. And and I know we have, blast that Edmonton Chawan partnership. Because that's the kind of stuff that might attract the. Finance major at East Carolina that. If he i- if he or she's taking a job with whatever bank or whatever else, you know. Straight out of college, it's. Depend, in eastern North Carolina, straight out of college, it's a competitive, it's a comparable salary. Now, in larger cities, it's not, but where we are, it's still relatively comparable. So anything like that, that we can offer this different. And and one question, this may be a legal question too. When we talk about bonuses, signing bonuses, attendance bonuses, all that stuff. Is it legal for a school system to put a um. In my world, we call it a non-compete, but. In other words, if we give you a thousand dollar signing bonus, if you leave in 12 months, you gotta pay it back. So I mean, you you you, I think anything we can offer. Attent, all those things, but entice them to stay. Because more than likely in the world we live in today, it's getting spent and ain't getting put in a savings account. So. I'm speaking from personal.
One thing I think we need to add too, when we talk about salary and bonuses is our benefits.
Yes.
Um, the benefits for a state employee, a teacher, teacher assistant, whatever. Almost outweigh the salary itself. When you think about just the. When you think about just the insurance, for example, that's an additional, I call it salary, because you don't have to pay it out of your pocket. It kind of, you know, comes with the job. So that's why I think we need a comprehensive recruitment retention plan. So that if I am out at First Citizens Bank or Fayette Tech trying to recruit, I can say, here, these are the things that we offer. You know, maybe signing bonus may not be on there, or it may be on there. It may be first month's rent or whatever we can put in that comprehensive recruiting and retention package that we all can tell the same story. Cause Carol may know something that we're offering that I don't know. Or Jerry may know something that I don't know. Or, but if we have a package so that we all share in the same story, I think we're, we're likely to get better benefits than it is if Carol knows something at the bank, I know something at the house, Roger Hughes knows something at Fayette Tech, and we're telling two or three or four different stories.
How far of an area do we go as far as recruiting? Do we go Tennessee, Pennsylvania?
I'm going to be honest, perfectly honest with you. Out of the five years I've been here, a little longer than that, we've been to numerous, especially this year, numerous job fairs. And the percentage of what we pay, the travel, we have come up with zero percent fill rate. We also, and I think it is a tribute to everyone that's in this room and those that are not, that we're in the top 5% in retention and recruitment, excuse me, not 5%, the top five districts in the state. Even during COVID, they were at awe at how we were able to recruit individuals to our district with what we had to offer. So yes, I do agree that there's work to be done. We're working on it daily in order to make sure that all positions are filled. Even when we're worried, we still fill them. So I thank those who are actively recruiting and that's everyone that's in this room, that is teachers, that is my staff as well. We're always actively looking. But what sells it, and I know what sells it for me, is leadership. Money's great, but if I don't have the support in the building, if I don't have someone who has my back, it's an issue. And so education, we all know when we joined the Army to educate our kids, we all knew that we were not going to receive maximum compensation like Texas or California or other states. We are here because we love our kids. We sell Clinton and I think we sell it well. But we are always actively looking for different ways. But for us to be a small district with the resources that we have to be the top five districts in recruitment and retention is just phenomenal. And so I want to thank you in the room for that, Dr. Brunson. We have updated our list of benefits that we do offer. So we can present it to teachers. We're also looking and I also talked to DPI about this and I haven't mentioned this to you, Dr. Johnson knows my vision. The major obstacle that we have coming in is when we have teachers that join us that goes into residency is the cost of the courses. And so eventually I would like to have our own E P P here in Clinton City Schools partnering with either East Carolina Fayette State or some other entity in order to do this. We have enough doctoral candidates in order to teach these courses and do it at a low rate that the district can take on. So that's our major obstacle for teaching, for keeping them here. Because like music, you have to go to a school that is not funded by the state and you're looking at six, seven, eight thousand dollars in order to just receive a certification for music. And so if we can do part of that in-house where it's low cost to no cost, then that's where we need to go with that. Of course, we partner with Sanson Community College as well with the E P Ps. But we are actively looking for ways to keep our teachers. We are actively looking for ways for social, emotional with them, because that's part of the issue too of keeping them here. So just know that we are on the job. We are super excited about what we're doing and we want to be number one in the state for recruitment and retention. And anything you can offer or anything that you can suggest, we're open.
Get with me, get with me.
Then we just signed some residency agreements. And we can get together with you and see exactly what we need. I can get you in contact with the dean for the School of Education. Cause we just did, we just had a big meeting with DPI to sign residency. So we are doing residency things and if I gotta get you in front of the graduating classes or whatever, you know, I've always offered that. Cause unfortunately it takes special people to be educators. Education is a career that's not for everybody. And that's fine, we, everybody, you know, we need people in other things. But to be an educator, you, you got to know what, what you're changing. You're changing people's lives, so I can get you there.
I know Dr. J said something last year, year before, something that was only one student that was graduating from E C U to be an English teacher or a math teacher, something. Do y'all see that in Tennessee, Virginia, South Carolina? That across state lines that nobody, so, so the pool isn't small just in North Carolina. The pool's small everywhere.
And see the problem with, or say us going to South Carolina. And I found this out several years ago. South Carolina works differently than North Carolina as far as districts are concerned. They pay different in different districts. They don't, so whatever district you're in, Conway District, they pay more than pretty much anybody else because that's the Myrtle Beach area. And so that's exactly right. So I know a teacher that I had at my previous school, he retired from here and that's where him and his wife settled because he looked at all the districts and that's where he was paid the most. So when you go to places like Virginia, same thing. They pay more than North Carolina. So if they graduate from there, most likely that's where they want to stay. So when you go, you have to have a big price tag on it. Texas have recruited from here. I've had several friends to go to Texas because they're paying starting salaries eighty thousand dollars a year. And so when you're looking at different states, you have to look at what their pay scale and bonuses will be. And if you can compete with that, then yes, you know, we can go. But our surrounding areas are more than what we pay in North Carolina, so it's just hard. Now, I, you know, out of country is a little different and I do agree with Dr. Johnson. It's, it's a little difficult sometimes for kids with that transition. It's doable, but it's a little, it's a little different for us here in Clinton City. But yes, I thought about going to Virginia. I've had the opportunity to go to Virginia, but then when I looked at what they're offering, it's like, how can I compete with that unless they're from North Carolina? And most of them aren't, but they have offered for us to go. But I've, I've been to every single job there this year that has been offered. Or I've sent someone to every job there and we've received no one. And we made calls right after, we did interviews right there. Well, I think about it and then we call them back and, and like UNC W, they want to be in New Hanover or we go to E C E. They want to be in Greenville. So we went to UNC G, same thing. So it's just a little difficult, but I think we're doing well as a small district to recruit from within and also from surrounding areas in order to receive quality teachers here.
Now, is there anything we could do with like the, like Circulant Apartments or Elizabeth Gardens or anything like that to help with moving cost or, you know, the first six months will pay a third of your rent or anything? Is there anything we can do to try to, because if you go to Saluda County in South Carolina, they ain't got nothing but potholes and dirt. You know, so they ain't got a whole lot of money to pay compared to the Myrtle Beach crowd.
Right.
You know, we'll help you, especially the young, just starting out type families need something, you know? We ain't got that many potholes in Clinton compared to Saluda and McCormick. But, but if you could go there, is there anything we could do?
The biggest part to Clinton and our surrounding area is the availability of the apartments. Even those that are here are struggling to find housing, affordable housing.
Yeah, rents twelve hundred dollars a month right now.
Right, and so, you know, if you're bringing home two thousand dollars a month and you have to pay twelve hundred just in rent and that's not including utilities, you're still struggling. So if we can, because I have talked to State Employees Credit Union. I met with the manager there and I told him, and we've seen it in the paper, that they're building a housing development with 300 homes here in Clinton. I asked him if we can look at how a program just for teachers and homeownership. And even, and, and talk to the contractors there to see if we can get a lot of houses to actually finance, help them finance. So just teachers, so they can stay. Because really if you buy a home, then you're investing in something. And with rent, it's a little different and it's always cheaper than rent. And so he said that he would look into that with us and then, you know, building credit and so on and so forth. So homeownership can be a possibility for our teachers since we know that apartments are not available.
Dr. Johnson's gonna talk about Eagle Point for a minute.
Actually, I'm gonna let John talk about it. John's up sitting over there, I'm gonna let John.
Yeah, the, you know, we've been entertaining since the, the possibility of the Sampson School, which is now, you know, it's been condemned and they, they lost that opportunity there to save that building. But, you know, Eagle Point has come back to the table and they have some interest in the only property Clinton City Schools Board of Education owns outright, which is College Street of some development. We're still in discussion with them and we had a face-to-face and, and I think they got some valuable information from our people. They were very, a small group, but very vocal and willing to express their opinion. So, you know, like Ms. Peterson alluded to, there's just, the housing is not available. I mean, and it's a challenge. I've got someone sitting to my left that can attest to that as a, as a young person starting out a career. It's, it's a challenge here. So, you know, anything we can do to help in that arena would be a, another piece Ms. Peterson could put out there on the table and say, hey, we're, we're doing this to help you get started. You know, come, come to Clinton City, we're, we're doing what we can to bring you here, so.
Yeah, thank you, John. Thank you, everybody. A fantastic discussion. We'll try to bring some of that data. Actually, Beth Metcalf came and met with Ms. Peterson and myself. I don't even know if Ms. Peterson and I knew how good we had done with retention and our numbers until Beth Metcalf, who was our regional consultant, came and met with us. And then at my last superintendent convening at UNC W, she actually developed a slide based on the conversation that she had with Ms. Peterson and I. And I had to present that slide to the other superintendents from the southeast. So I can definitely bring you that slide, but also to show you our results. And it is mostly city schools and it is mostly small districts that have such great results. And I would say the reason why they have such great results is what we've been talking about here. Is that we're trying to establish this family type atmosphere. We're doing all these different incentives and trying to make our staff feel like they're welcomed and wanted. And we're doing a great job with that. Could we get better to Ms. Carroll's point? Absolutely. And these, these strategies and thoughts and suggestions that you've provided will definitely be taken to heart. And we'll do what we can to continue to improve in those areas. But we'll try to bring you some of that data at our July meeting. If you can remember, Ms. Peterson, then remind me, we'll try to bring that. Some other things that I know that you guys like to, to be aware of is our retention numbers. And Teresa, we had to get these as we were thinking about our staffing allotments because we actually had to drop back and punt as a lot of people like to say, when it came to Butler Avenue. And you'd say, wow, why do you guys drop back and punt, Dr. Johnson? Well, when you see that you retained 16 first graders, what do you guys know about class size law at first grade? It's one to 16. So when you retain 16 first grade students, I've got to add a whole nother teacher. So however, some of y'all may look at me and say, well, Dr. Johnson, can't you do something about that? I absolutely cannot. Cause what does the law say? Board chair, Brunson? The principal, the principal grades in place of students. Doesn't even say the teacher. Says the principal grades in place of students. So if the principal says there's 16 retainees, I can jump up and down, I can stand on my head, I can turn over tables. But that's how many is gonna be retained. And so I had to come back to my team and say, what are we gonna do? And they said, you're gonna give them another teacher. And so that's what we had to do. And, and like we talked about, and somebody said this earlier, we have a very large kindergarten class. And so we do, yes, sir. So right now, on, not, this is on paper, but it's still numbers. Right now, first graders next year, we got 260. Well, Jeremy just mentioned our rising sixth grade class, that's 267. We do, we do, because like the seventh grade class is 204. But, so that's a dilemma we're in too, because last year we only had eight sixth grade teachers. This year we've got 11 sixth grade teachers. I don't want to get into all that because we've been talking about this at, at the cabinet levels for like months. But so like, you think about, well, who are you, who are you gonna go out there and find? Well, you can find elementary teachers because elementary teachers can teach K six. So let's say Sheila says, Wesley, all I can find you are three additional K six teachers. And I put them there to, to meet that need. Well, what happens next year? They're seventh grade and elementary teachers can't teach seventh grade. So that's all these different things that sometimes you don't understand the dynamics. But those are our retention numbers. And what you see a lot of times, because I was a principal at a grade level transition, you don't see a lot of retainees a lot of times at grade level transitions. Case in point, look how many got retained in fifth grade.
Zero.
Zero. Because I've had them for three years. Time for you to get up out of here.
That is not always the mentality.
But, but, but you know, but, but. But, so, and that's not always the mentality. You're right, but, um, but again, and to go back to first grade, and my wife's a first-grade teacher, and, and she, she doesn't retain students, uh, but very often. But if you're gonna retain a, a student, most educators will tell you, do it early. And if you're gonna do it, do it in first grade, which is when they learn mostly how to read. Um, and so, that's a real pivotal, that first and second grade is real pivotal in the reading strategies. And so, when you get students that are behind, you're not gonna send them on, because the art of reading kind of goes away, and it gets into more literature. We don't want to get into all that, because we've already been out here talking a lot. But those are your retention numbers. Um, we are doing some.
Are those numbers kind of expecting? Or do you think they're a little high?
I wasn't, I wasn't expecting sixteen at first grade. But I can tell you, those numbers are a lot, uh, there are a lot less than when I took over a superintendent. I remember the first time I ever went to a meeting with one of my principals, and she had over forty retained. I literally talked about flipping over tables. I, 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 I started flipping over tables. Um, and some of that forty dwindled, but it was still over thirty. So, no, they, they, we, we're doing a lot more, we're doing a lot diff- we're doing things a lot differently, and we're really working hard on, uh, providing our students the resources that they need to be successful grade in and grade out. Um, we do have the NCVPS we've talked about. We're offering, I think, sixteen students some classes through the NCVPS. That was fun, additional funding that was provided by the state. Uh, we've got several students that are signed up, thirty students. We talked about all these summer programs we, we've got going. I actually went to the high school today to do some, uh, again, we had some students that were graduating. And I was like, are we out of school? Because there were students there that I kept running into. Um, so thirty kids in our Career and College Jump Start Program. Uh, and, um, we've got some mock interviews. When is June twenty-eighth? That's soon. Tomorrow. Uh, so if anybody's interested with doing mock interviews from ten to twelve, please let Dr. Malinas know. Well, I guess you'd have to text her. Uh, so hopefully, hopefully she's found everybody she needs. I do need to let y'all know this, and this is probably not going to be met with much excitement, because I know how the board felt about when we adopted this contract. But we have had some contract concerns with Carolina Therapy for speech and physical therapy. Uh, and we are, um, I forgot the word that Teresa used in her email today, but she emailed the whole cabinet today to say we could discuss this on Thursday. But what did she say, emergencies? I don't know the word she used, but we're in dire straits, I'll use that term, when it comes to speech and PT, uh, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So, she told me to say this tonight, that, and she put this in her email. Uh, this actually came from the, the, uh, EC, the EC director. If y'all know of anybody that can do speech and PT, we will call them, we'll beg them, we'll go and grovel basically, because we are in bad shape for speech and PT for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Did I, I gave you a name?
You did, and we, and we reached out, yeah. Fantastic, fantastic. Um, so, yes, so we're, you know, doing all we can. Just know that there was a list, I think John pulled up the email, I'm not gonna ask him to read it, but there was about sixteen different companies, or eighteen different companies, that our EC director had already reached out to. Many won't even return a phone call, won't return emails. Um, so.
Plenty of work.
Yeah. Plenty of work, so, um, but we're gonna do all that we can to, again, make sure that we have the resources to, to provide to our students who need those services. Um, but we didn't get a lot of help with the previous clump company, who, as my dad would say, dropped us like a bad habit when they needed to. Uh, so, um, anyway, that's enough for that. We do have, uh, as you guys know, and as I think it's part of board policy, we're supposed to let you know anytime that we have, uh, somebody working with, uh, us on doctoral research. Uh, so, we have this, uh, relationship between leadership styles of principal, African-American student achievement. Uh, and you can see that information. They're gonna pull our NC School Report Card data. They may do some phone interviews with our principals, I'm not quite sure. Uh, Teresa's looked at the whole study, the participation is voluntary. Uh, and CCS will have access to the data if any of our principals choose to participate. So, they have, it's voluntary, they don't have to do it, but we're gonna make it available. Uh, I actually looked at it, but Teresa read it in more depth as well. So, any questions for now Teresa's items, Dr. Malinas's items? All right, can I stop talking? I'm good.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, for covering Dr. Malinas in our absence and doing your own work. And congratulations to all our students and staff that have achieved above and beyond for their school year. We appreciate your hard work, all of you. Uh, next item is, um, Mr. Lo.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, as usual. I've highlighted what's changed in the Technology and Facilities Information Item page. Um, we finally found a, a, a set of candidates we thought were interviewable for the mechanic two position, maintenance mechanic two position. And we have someone who's accepted that position, they're going to start June twenty-ninth. Um, hopefully, it will work out well for them and for us. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Whaley will be glad to have a counterpart. He's been covering a lot of work tickets by himself since October. Um, we started with gym floor summer refinishing, um, refreshing projects. Uh, they're actually complete at Sunset and Sampson Middle, except for a little blemish we've got to clean up. Um, CHS is scheduled to begin July seventh. Um, so that's going well. Um, summer painting started at LCK in a multi-purpose building. They've since switched over to Butler, um, to get that done before the short summer ends. And we're not able to get in there and move things and paint the rooms that the principal shows to be painted. Um, I, because board policy requires the report to date from seven one twenty-two to six nineteen twenty-two three for facility usage. Um, Clinton City Schools has received gross receipts of twenty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. That includes not only where people rent the facility, the rental fee, but, um, payments for custodian and security services as well. And that's both in and out of school groups. We've still got that grant proposal for the eight open gate systems. All the DOJ will say is that awards will be announced in the fall of twenty-twenty-three. They won't give a month, they won't give a date, they just say the fall. So, I'll keep you posted, that's all they'll tell us. Um, we're still working on, uh, the access control part of our previous SVPP grant. Um, we needed parts to complete College Street, they're ordered. Um, I think they're finally ready to finish up Clinton High School. There was a concern that the way we were implementing it wouldn't be supported, and I didn't want to do that if it would not be supported moving forward. But I think we've got that worked through, and that should move forward very soon. Um, our Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund money that we got for roofing projects, um, work at LC Car is nearing completion. Um, they're on to the shingle portion of that roof of that project now. Um, the work at BAS is complete, and they'll soon start at Sunset. They were supposed to start today, but weather held them off, so they'll get there soon. Um, and then, we're working on that plan to just renovate that entire front entrance of LC Car, because the canopy's leaking, and the concrete, you, we used to paint it every year, and it, it, Mr. Dirks attempted to peel it off, and it didn't all peel off. And the current, uh, concrete doesn't meet current ADA code, so we're just gonna revamp the whole thing and put a new cover on it. And we'll be using that special public school building repair and renovation fund to tackle that project. Um, we've got HVAC underway at Butler. They are putting in ductwork on the three hundred building right as we, well, they probably stopped by now, but they started on that yesterday. Um, uh, and of course, LC Car is slated to be next summer. Just a reminder that these projects don't replace the existing two-pipe system, where we have to switch from heating to cooling. They improve ventilation and outside air controls, and they'll get the building to the proper humidity levels. But they don't, we didn't have enough money to replace the entire system, unless we did just one site. And Dr. Johnson and I talked about it at length, and we were not willing to get one site completely resolved and replace an entire system, and leave outside air ventilation and humidity issues at the other site between Car and Butler. So, we split those up. And just a, another report, we're still on most days, not last week, because it was so rainy, but on most days, and then you can obviously see the weekends, our solar at SAS is producing more energy than the building is using. So, we're getting that, uh, direct credit. So, that is still, uh, an impressive, an impressive project. That's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
Uh, quick question. Um, anybody in maintenance, uh, plumbing license, electrical license? Uh, HVAC, a- anything got the, the credentials?
Yeah, we have, um, Mr. Kevin Sandlin is licensed school electrical, which is a limited electrical. It's not general electrical. And since then, Roy Whaley, James Roy Whaley, has taken the exam and achieved that. Um, Emory Moore got accepted based on experience. He's got to go take the exam, he hasn't taken it. Uh, it's underway. Um, so, we're, we're trying to encourage those guys to do that. Um, our new hire has just recently, um, completed, um, some of his, uh, refrigeration certifications. So, we're encouraged to think them to work on that, and, uh, hopefully, that will benefit the, the, it's a catch twenty-two. If we help them get their certifications, then they can get more pay outside of us. Like Smithville, you see their sign, if you work in maintenance over there, they start at twenty-one seventy-five and go up to over thirty dollars an hour, and our pay is not even close. I mean, like, a young man like Emory Moore, you know, if we calculate his salary per hour, he's more like fifteen, twenty-five, fifteen, thirty-five, and that, that's a catch twenty-two. You help them get the certifications, it helps us, uh, better. We don't have to hire out as many things, but then they're more appealing and have other options. So, it's, it's a challenge in the maintenance world. That's why we went so long with unqualified or non-desirable applicants for the maintenance mechanic two position, which is HVAC, electrical, plumbing. And they just, there's more money elsewhere, and, you know, we try to counsel the one who left. You're gonna make more money, but you got to pay your own business liability insurance. You got to pay your own health insurance, you're not get, you got to put money aside for retirement. So, if you factor all that in, are you really making more money? And I talked to them individually, but, you know, they see the dollar amount. And like, uh, Vice Chair Hales has said, unfortunately for a lot of young people today, they're not even putting it in their savings, they're spending as hard as they can bring it in and not thinking about down the road. But, um, it's, it's a continuing challenge, uh, to keep our guys and keep quality people in the maintenance division.
Well, do we have any of those provisions in place, like we spoke about with, with Peterson? If they, they're committed to, to stick with us for a while, if we pay for the cost of these provisions, and if they don't, they have to pay it back?
It's not in, it's not in place, but can it, something like that, can we not implement something like that? That if, um, you know, we, we fund these certifications and they leave in six months or whatever, that they, they.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine.
Or to somebody else. What does it take to put it in place?
I think another idea that we've looked at, um, a- and, and we'll, and we'll come to that, but I want to make sure you are aware of this. Another idea that we've looked at, Ms. Carol, is to pay additional money for those certifications. So, not only to, uh, help them get that certification, and then, because, you know, to use your word from earlier, I really like incentives. So, what we've talked about, and we actually have started the process, we just don't have it quite ready to be board-approved yet. We've got some things that like, if you achieve this certification, it's worth this extra money per month. If you achieve this certification, it's worth this amount of money per month. And we've got it for maintenance, we've got it for technology, we've got it for child nutrition, we've got it for administrative, uh, assistance. And so, our idea is, not that that's not a good idea, because it, it can be. It's just a different way to look at it, is if you achieve these certifications, it's gonna be worth this extra money per month. And then, it incent- incentivizes you to go get that certification, but then also incentivizes you to stay, because now you've got this extra money per month. Now, is it still gonna be comparable to what they can get out in the business world? Probably not, but at least it's a good faith estimate, effort to show, we're trying to help you, and we're gonna incentivize you by getting, helping you to get these, um, extra certifications.
And the only reason I asked the question is because I was thinking ten years down the road, because he ain't got many more years left, and if he's got all the pieces of paper, we gonna be in trouble. I didn't know if we had some.
Yeah, I, I've been, since Dr. Johnson put me over facilities and maintenance, I had sort of a learning curve, but that's part of what I've worked on for technology and for facilities and maintenance. And we're having discussions about, you know, what is the plan of succession? What do we need to put in place? Who needs to be cross-trained, these younger hires? Um, talking with them about, would you see yourself as maintenance supervisor for Clinton City Schools? Is that something you want to work towards? Well, here's what you need to think about, and here's what you need to plan for. And so, we're having those discussions with those employees and, and making sure they, they understand what skill sets they might need to work on, and what things they might need to have in place, like a license or a certification to be even eligible for some of those positions. So, you know, we're having those discussions and trying to make plans as best we can.
Because my, uh, and, and the reason why I started thinking about this, my brother is a licensed plumber, and the company he used to work for, the man that owned the company only had a license in South Carolina, North Carolina, and Virginia. And my brother had licenses in thirty-five states. And when, when he said, I'm done, the man went out to the job site and shut every job site down, because they didn't have the licenses. And so, when, when, you know, he retires, that means everything we got to do, you got to hire somebody if we don't have that. And so, that, that's kind of what spur- sparked that in my, in my brain.
Yep.
You've got a plan, and that's fine.
You're exactly right, because you have people working underneath that person's license, and they're supervising it. And if that supervisor leaves, like you said, they will shut down a job site, because you don't have the licensed or certified person there. But we're, uh, we're planning for that, but good thought. Thank you, Ms. Ed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lo. Um, Ms. Peterson?
In board docs, you will find two board policies for revision, for first read. Please let me know if you have any questions in reference to these two policies. That's all I have.
Only two pieces of homework, instead of twelve. So much. Okay. Next item on our agenda is Education Spotlight. We have had the pleasure throughout the year to recognize and honor numerous employees and children for their hard work. We are so proud of their hard work, and are so glad to spotlight them during our monthly meetings. Um, tonight, we are also honored to recognize our own superintendent, Dr. Wesley Scott Johnson. Dr. Johnson has been selected by his peers in the Southeast Education Alliance Region to represent them and us as a Southeast Alliance Regional Superintendent of the Year for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-four school year. There you go. Thank you. While, while Mr. Lo is pulling that up, I'm gonna write an article. That's an independent. Recognize that guy? Uh, Clinton City Schools Superintendent Dr. Wesley Johnson has been honored as the Southeast Education Alliance twenty twenty-three, twenty-four Superintendent of the Year. The alliance represents the fifteen school districts in Southeast and North Carolina. Johnson, a Sampson County native, is a graduate of Camel University. He worked his way through Camel to earn a BS and MMA degree in physical education, a master's degree in school administration, and he holds a doctorate degree in educational leadership from East Carolina University. He began his educational career as a math teacher in Sampson County schools. With over twenty-four years of experience, he has previously served as a teacher, assistant principal, principal, director, and assistant superintendent. While serving as a teacher, Johnson has also discovered his love for coaching and has coached various sports, including softball, baseball, football, and basketball. Dr. Johnson says this is not an individual award. Since I arrived within Clinton City Schools, I have been treated warmly and like a member of the family. We've talked about the family earlier tonight. Clinton City Schools is a thriving educational organization founded on a rich history and filled with a wealth of dedicated students, faculty, parents, and a supportive board of education. In two thousand, Johnson married the love of his life, Kimberly Love Johnson. Johnson and Kimberly are the proud parents of Inslee, Emery, and Evan. We've heard a lot about those girls. Johnson represents the Southeast Region Superintendent as a member of the North Carolina School Superintendent Association Executive Board. He has also been one of the lead superintendents in the regional work around accountability and school grade reform efforts for our state. Uh, Dr. Johnson is a strong advocate for equity in classroom instructional practices as well as with schools and districts surrounding um, access and opportunity for all students. Congratulations, Dr. Johnson. I wonder what took your colleagues so long to choose you as the Regional Superintendent of the Year? We knew it all along. Um, let's give him a round of applause. We are planning um, a reception for Dr. Johnson in early August. Waiting on him, it's hard to get him to settle down and give us the date, a date so that we will um, have our entire staff invited so that they're able to um, join in our celebration of Dr. Johnson as he represents us as the Southeast Superintendent of the Year for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, uh, faculty and staff that are with us and that are listening. I wish I would have seen uh, Ms. Ms. Hayes putting that together. I would have stomped on that computer, but she must have done it when I wasn't looking. But no, I, as my quote said earlier, this is not an individual award at all. We have a tremendous, tremendous wealth of talent that I inherited and that we've been able to work together to promote uh, equity and achievement for all students. And I, I I'm just happy to say I'm a part of the organization and a part of the work that's being done here in Clinton City Schools. And there's a lot of work to do, which we've talked about tonight. Uh, but we continue to make great achievements and great efforts and accomplishments because of the hardworking individuals in our district. And so we do all that we can to support uh, our community and our families. And we thank our families for choosing Clinton City because we know now that, what is it? Choose your school, choose your future. So we know if you choose Clinton City Schools, you're choosing a bright future. And we appreciate everyone that chooses Clinton City Schools. And we had a rich history and it's going to continue to be a rich history because of the many people that are in this room and that line the halls of our schools each and every day. So thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, faculty and staff, and I'm going to get you, Ms. Hayes.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, and thank you, Ms. Hayes. She's worked on this uh, for a while. Uh, board members, the next, next section on the agenda is board of education items. I have one thing, I want a couple of things. Anybody else have anything?
I've just got one thing, that's it. You want me to go ahead? Uh, I noticed during graduation that there wasn't a flag on the flagpole when we had graduation. If we could, if there's a flagpole standing, if we could put a flag on every flagpole that we got. And I don't know if it's, I know there was a shortage of them at one time. But if if we, if we got a pole, we need to have a flag on it. If we could figure out where some is at.
Yeah, I'm not sure why it was not, the flag was not raised on that pole because it had one just the week before. I'm not sure who lowered it or removed it.
It got borrowed for the soccer game because we got a shortage. I I I don't.
No, we don't have a shortage. I've got flags that I've given to principals and athletic directors that are sitting in their offices. So there, there's not a shortage. They've got flags.
Okay.
So they've got flags in place.
If we could send a message out to the coaches and the principals, if they need any pole, if it's, I don't care. If it's a pole, it needs to have a flag on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edgerton, Mr. Lo. Anybody else have any items? If not, I'd just like to say a big thank you to Dr. Johnson and his staff for all the year-end activities that that I was able to attend. The um, the food was delicious every place I went. Um, the, the fellowship was, was great. You're talking about that family feeling, that family atmosphere. I think, you know, I went to Baccalaureate, I went to middle school graduation, I went to the high school graduation. There the retirees, Teacher of the Year, the employees. I mean, you know, I think you just kind of outdid yourselves. Every time I thought this was the best one yet, then the next one seemed to be even better. So thank you for your hard work, your um, your professionalism. Uh, your, I know it takes a lot of planning, a lot of extra work that's kind of not in your regular day-to-day job description is that Z that says anything else that you are assigned to do. I understand the superintendent does a great job with assigning things and you guys, your ladies and and the gentlemen that help out um, really come through. Um, makes, makes me really, really, really proud to be a dark horse. And um, I'm sure that the, the recipients of the awards and all the, the ways we thought about people wasn't able to make the substitutes. I think I was here with Mr. Lo in the Eagle Point. Um, and I had, I had to go to work that afternoon. So again, thank you, thank you, thank you for, for, I'll just say the way you made me feel and I'm sure others felt that way and 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 better about um, those celebrations. And and I, I'm, I'm just overwhelmed with uh, with joy from how I felt at those things. So thank you so much. Um, other thing I have is our next meeting is July twenty-fifth. This time it's at five o'clock instead of four. I can't remember why we had to change it for that hour, but it's Tuesday, July twenty-fifth at five o'clock right here. No, no, that's the reorganization of meeting, okay? Board reorganization meeting. And board members will be thinking about that too as well. I'll get in touch with you about reorganization. Any other comments or thoughts from the board? Staff, thank you for your attendance, everybody. And if nothing else, I need a motion to adjourn the June twenty-seventh meeting.
And since Pastor Russ isn't here, I'll take that. I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Edgerton, for standing in for Pastor Russ. Can I get a second? Second, Mr. Hales. All in favor, let it be known by the word aye. Aye. Motion carried, meeting adjourned. Go horses.